Well, Jackie's gonna present to us this evening. And maybe she'll be able to give us a timeline, but it should happen pretty quick.
Okay, that's good.
We have a lot of walls in the drawing room.
Oh, my God.
Yep, I was out in, I was out in southeast Colorado on a fire assignment that week. So I left on Saturday, the day before Father's Day, and got back on Friday.
Southeast Colorado, where?
And I was at the Pinion Canyon Maneuver Site for Fort Carson.
Oh, yeah, I know that, those canyons.
Yep, we had a 1,500 acre fire that had some room to grow just before this. A lot of rain came in and they put about a million dollars worth of aviation on it in a single day to keep it at 1,500 acres.
I have been to those canyons near Concharville. You know, and I can see where a fire, it's all brush, you know, low brush. It's all low brush, so I'm hard to imagine it's funny because there's so much rock there, too.
Yeah, and it's just the wind. You don't understand the wind, it's so...
I always don't understand it's from these winds, all bets are off.
Yeah, it's truly the wind.
We pulled out of control?
Yeah, we crushed it.
Christian, you doing okay?
No, I'm good, as always.
Are you good?
It's good.
Okay, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have some remarks?
Yeah. That's perfect. This is per usual for housing.
Just in...
We're trying to be, those in this, what Jackie's gonna present, if there are two alternative two options in the House, it's sort of more about size. And it could be a third option, I can't think. I mean, all we're trying to do is get to the ballpark, what's possible.
I just don't know of any other de-restrictive homes in any other county that is for people that look outside that county.
That's, well, Tim and I agreed that this, Christian Tracy felt differently about it. And we had a couple people spoke, John Nelson spoke about that. And really felt like the way it worked, the first option was unfair. Also, a lot of us could speak, but he felt like he was stronger. So I didn't say that to him either.
Me either. You didn't tell him on it.
Huh? Didn't tell him on it.
What was that? What did he, I mean, say?
Well, it was more west felt like our first option, you know. And so, you know, people have to say, it's fair.
It's a tough word.
I'm gonna keep it here. Good. Don't worry, I'll hold you down. Man, I have your pills. Not yet. Yeah.
I took some of them.
Yeah.
Can I add something about it?
No, they're not the, you know, first right, it's right time. Let's see.
Is it already 9:35?
No, that's, that's, that's the estimate we're gonna get out of it.
This clock comes up on the... Now, we know that Tracy is not gonna be able to be here tonight. And we know that Dana is running, is going to run, she sent me a note. She's trying to get to a place where she'll have access. So we'll see when she's able to. So we have all city council here. They could be able to, it's time, and Tracy will be on Zoom. I'm not sure she's also heard, but... Thank you. You can tell this is gonna be really...
Is there the hand in the upper right? What is that thing?
Yeah, that's that little...
Okay.
My little mouse.
They were working on it.
That's one thing I learned during COVID, that you can make your mouse big so that everybody can see it.
Hey, Tim.
How are you?
I'm good, okay.
You look fast today.
You're done, Stan. You're not on that.
We represent.
If you had, if you had a bow tie, then it'd be perfect.
It's too long.
Okay, all right. Glad you're full. Uh, we're leaving about a minute. Warren is supposed to be here, but...
Yes.
So she is. There's a lot of other 800 pages to do.
It's like you said, 8 o'clock.
Why is this so bad? Yeah, this is nice. I was gonna turn it into some sort of, you know, weird thing, but it's good.
Was that screen broken for...?
Yes.
So I looked up this box on Amazon and I saved it so that I can remember. Because it looks like the connection, the little lights on saying that the connection's working, but it's not. Okay. I think we're asked to. I don't know, I can't remember.
Okay, does it start? Yes, sir. Yup, thank you. It is 6:03, 6:03, call the city council July 2022, 4th.
Councilmember Larson, absent. Councilmember Hill?
Present.
Councilmember Luna Leon?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Green? Councilmember for Gensie?
Present.
And Mayor Lobby?
I'm here. And for the record, we expect Councilmember Green to be late, so if possible. Okay, that's for the approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any changes to the agenda? I do have one. I would like to add to 7C after the city mystery report. Chief Edmonds would like to make a presentation to city council regarding the 4th of July festivities, specifically the 4th. Any other changes to the agenda? Then I would entertain questions.
Councilmember for Gensie approves the agenda with changes. He'll say it's...
Any other discussion? On the paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, all are paid. Just talking of housekeeping matters, did anybody would like to hurry up before we get started?
There was, is signing sheet up there? Just making sure.
On the dials?
Yes, I put it on up there so people...
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Real quick, I would like to, I have some things to do up for the 4th of July festivities. You know, one of them is the 4th of July, it was just awesome. And that was mostly because of the police department really worked hard to make sure that both ends of the avenue were closed off. And I'll also say, you know, for the, for the run, the five cracker, five day, for that, I really felt like the Hall of Fame group did an excellent job. They had a big turnout, they had 300 runs. And I don't think they ever had that meeting before. So it was really good. And a lot of people from out of town. Next, I would say I really want to thank the county and, and Road and Bridge and the Fire Department for, for the airport cookout. And I may be missing some people with that, Tim. Anybody else that was involved in that?
Oh, maybe, but the name, I think her best Josh Adams, our airport director.
Oh, yeah, Josh is out there, too.
Yeah.
Anyway, what a great event that was. Okay, that's it for me. Anybody else with any asking about? Okay, thank you. At this time, we would like to hear maybe the public, we'd like to city council. If you would like to speak, please sign up. And then introduce yourself and your address, and you will have three minutes to speak to city council. Anybody like to speak to city council?
I would, if possible.
We have somebody coming to the, to the, uh, legislature right now. Who, who is speaking?
My name is Allison. I posted on the chat like I was prompted to, but no one responded yet.
Okay, Allison, you'll be next up, if that's okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Please go ahead.
My name is Kim Eason. I live at one of my, went to me or at property. And I'm happy to say that just two hours of her obviously very good advice were very valuable. Which was, this message to all of you, very friendly, very calm, and non-centered. And I'm going to try to do that, I'm not happy with this. But there's a story here in town, and that things are all going to be interested in here. So I'm gonna start by reading what is on the city council website. Under vision, it states, "We maintain our authentic identity while improving the quality of life for residents that is economically, culturally, environmentally sustainable." Under mission, the website says, "We are respectful, harmonious collaborator, insist on transparent governing that prioritizes opportunities that preserve our history and our heritage." Notice the absence here of protecting human. Maybe not. We're gonna get back to that. The mayor's bio goes on to say, "The he is most important role is that as a city employee, always treats citizens with kindness and respect. Everything after that should naturally resolve. Yet a government that cares for all people in response to its people." Is that even true? I'm here to tell you that as a resident and homeowner, I'm shaking up. That has not proven to be the case. And in my case in particular, the story I'm about to tell you has carried serious personal consequences. And I'm not here just for this. I'm here for a high neighborhood that is confused, unhappy, frustrated, and at a loss to understand the lack of appropriate engagement with city government. Now, the consequences to me and our local personal are to my health. And the circumstance that I'm here to describe to you is the thing, is one of the good, the good thing of the homeowner, a visitor, an elder person.
Yeah, my apologies.
Who's here a long time.
Three minutes is up.
I think this community deserves to hear another three minutes.
I'll tell you what we'll do. At the end of city council, we also have an opportunity for citizens to speak. But, but we have other people who want to speak, and we need to adhere to our rules.
Everyone in this room to know, this gentleman has shut down conversation every time.
I have not done that.
And has made decisions.
Kim. At this time.
An entire neighborhood has shut down, he's in knowledge.
You need to go sit down. And you will have an opportunity at the end of city council, you'll have another opportunity to speak to city council at that time.
Is there anyone else here who will concede their time to me?
I will.
Mr. Press, time has conceded.
I think that is not in our rules of order, so I appreciate the thought. You need to go sit down. If you can't do that, if you can't not disrupt this meeting, then... I'm, I'm dead serious.
No, I understand.
You need to go sit down.
This is not disrupting specific discourse.
Ms. Eason, if I have to have you removed, I will do that. I'd rather not do that. We've never done that before, but that could happen. Well, I could understand.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
Do you mind? I would love to hear your story, however, we do have those border. And please stay. This shouldn't take too long, but tonight we don't have a very full agenda. It appears that you have a concern that you're, you're willing to stay around. In fact, I believe Allison, who's on the television going through our... She probably is gonna speak about the same thing, so I believe. Yeah.
No.
Thank you. Next, we still would like to hear from the public. Allison, I got my name on this. Okay, thank you very much. Allison, you had asked to speak. Would you please speak to city council? Introduce yourself and your address, please.
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
We can, through you very clearly.
Okay, good. Um, my name's Allison Maggio. I live up on South Toledo. And among some of my concerns, I just wanted to do the public comment tonight to see if I could get one of my concerns addressed regarding the excavation permit that the city of Leadville issued for what was listed on the permit as a sewer mainline replacement. From my understanding, a construction excavation company installed a water main in a right-of-way, which is tricky because I've hired a surveyor, but nothing up there is actually surveyed properly, and no one's properties match up with their deeds. So that's tricky. But they installed a water main to run to the property behind me at 122 and a half, South Toledo. However, there is no agreement with the Parkville Water District for this water main. The excavation permit was applied for a sewer and water line installation, not a sewer mainline replacement. There is no contracts for service line extension agreements from either Parkville Water District or Leadville Sanitation. The permit states it started on the 23rd through the 27th. There's no supporting documents. I wasn't listed as a person of access. And I was just knocked on my door and asked to move my vehicle if I wanted to drive it for the day so they could access this area. I'm addressing the use of my property with an attorney, since that's not your guys' issue. But my biggest issue is the dig once policy that is in the ordinance for the excavation with the city of Leadville, which is 12.12.120T, which says if you open up an area, a trench to install utilities, you have to do them all at one time. So I'm a little confused why they would install one line and not wait to install both. The permit says they were gonna cut a 3x3 or 3x5 hole in the asphalt, and they cut the entire street open. There's one permit for the street and both alleys they used. The holes were open till the 3rd with no barriers around them. And right now, there's a massive drainage issue happening now that we've gotten a little bit of rain, since the drainage barrier was not replaced between my property and that right-of-way. And then, I'm guessing, since there's no inspection written down on the excavation permit, no one met with them, and Parkville Water has no obligation to it. Doesn't look like there's any bedrock or anything. All of the soot and top layer has washed down into the street. There's multiple feet of it in front of my property. It's kind of like a thick mud cement. It slings everywhere when we drive in and out now. It's mostly raw.
We, we do issue excavation permits. Those are Parkville Water, Level Sanitation, who do that, that work. We can check for you. Lord Ty does our excavation permits. We can check and see what, what the status of that, of that permits. But without having the first, really don't have a good answer for you. I can tell you...
I have...
I went out there and talked to the excavator, and they felt like they, they were in the right-of-way and were doing a problem, so we'll, we'll double check.
No, I have the permit, though.
She doesn't have the completed permit.
Okay, okay, we, we will check on that and follow up with you, Allison.
So someone's gonna...
Can you give Lord Ty your phone number right now?
I can. I was like, she sent me the permit and I met with Parkville. My biggest concern right now is the condition of the road, since no one inspected anything or made them actually backfill it properly.
It wouldn't happen until the project is completed. So I'm sorry you haven't gone through that, but, but it is in process at this time. Okay, thank you, thank you very much. A couple of more people who'd like to speak.
Hi, everyone. Paul Still from the 390 East Second Street. On the same theme of the construction that's been going on in the area for, I guess, a year, year and a half. In my mind, there are two major issues. One, communication, a lack thereof to the residents who are being affected by the construction, or what the timing, what the intent is of the construction, the construction that's going on. And secondly, remediation. You know, we all understand that there are infrastructure issues that need to be worked on. But at minimum, I think that ourselves, all of the residents, should have access to their property. Normal access. You can't really see the depth of the hole there that I've shown you. That's our main driveway, and it's about a foot deep. Which means my wife and I bottom out every time we enter and exit the driveway. It's not right. It should be, whoever's doing the work there needs to clean up behind themselves. And, and the biggest victims of this, unfortunately, are Kim and, and the people who live at the end of the road, that's South Rio. We were just heartbroken the last few days, watching the fire engines come by their house and try to dig them out of hole in wood, that's just flooding into their home as a result of the construction. So, you know, I appreciate you have time and it's very big and efficient, and whatnot. This is a huge problem. Tim didn't have the time to express it, but I do know my neighbor, and it just hurts me to see my other neighbors affected in this way from this construction. My wife and I lived through this. It's, it's an issue of the driveway. We bottomed out. It's not great, but it's not flooding our house.
Can I ask you a question? That, that washout that you're showing, did that happen because of this last run? Or was that previous to that?
There was, there was a similar type hole that was there for a long time. I approached the construction crew a few weeks ago prior to the, to the rain and storms, and they were nice enough to put some dirt in and fill that hole. They did it for me, and I asked them to do it for my neighbor across the street. But it was just, you know, dirt and whatnot, and it didn't last long. First rainstorm, it was swept away. So, yeah, if they're gonna do some remediation, they should do top of it, maybe use stones, whatever.
Do you remember which construction crew? Because there were, there were three different utilities working on Second Street.
If I hear the name on them.
Well, it's, it's Level Sanitation that was doing it, and then also Parkville Water. And also Sightwise was doing it for XL.
I think it was Sightwise, okay. And, and, and mind you, they were very tired when I approached them.
Okay.
You know, they filled it, it was just dirt, and it got swept out, not with the first rain. So that's it, too many issues, communication, and proper remediation. Has they're doing work to make sure that our driveways are accessible? Especially the people who live at the end, their houses isn't getting flooded.
So will you just give us your name again, so we can put it in there?
Paul Still, 390 East Second Street.
Thank you.
I would say to this, and what happened to, to Ms. Eason. I had never seen a rain like that level. Not the entire pipeline in there, it's just my getting it out. And so I was, I wasn't sure if I was correct. So I went to the street department guys, I said, "Have you ever seen anything like what happened Saturday afternoon?" They said, "No, it has never rained like that." It was, it was flash floodstones. And, and it, it created damage all over the city, not just on Second Street. I, you know, I feel badly that Second Street was affected, but we were on 7th. They were washed out, houses were flooding, we were all over the place. And they were down at Second Street also. And then the street department and I discussed a possible future solution to that, because the culprit that we just put in to help that not happen, in terms of where that water was directed, it completely clung down, you know. And so I, I would say certainly we bear some responsibility for what happens on the city streets. But sometimes, things, and especially weather events like this one, are just not within our control. So we're gonna do everything we can to try and get it straight, including work with the contractors. You know, that, that wasn't our project on Second Street. But, but we all, we were helping, you know, we were, we were involved in that, in that project, trying to be helpful to Level Sanitation, Parkville Water, and, and XL Sightwise. And the reason we wanted it to go longer for a place, because we wanted to pay. We wanted, we wanted to pay them a month ago. So just, just to let you know, you know, we're not aware, and it's something that we wanted resolved long before that. But we're not able to do that, because the utilities simply didn't finish up the work. So not blaming them, everybody runs behind all the time, and it's unfortunate. But that's where we are right now.
My name is Steve Pressash. I live at 131 East Third Street. You know, we used to be able to speak five minutes. And for no reason that I ever found out, it was reduced down to three minutes. And I don't think the average person can really say what they need to say in three minutes. If you're a lawyer, you can. So I'd like to know if I could, at the end of the meeting, my three minutes, if Kim still wants to speak, I could donate it also there, so she could speak six minutes straight. Because not everybody can, you know, spew out, you know, like Greg just did. Is that possible?
No, it's not, not part of our process in terms of how city council is run, in, in four vertiginous. But you are welcome to speak, as you, as you wish.
You said for a very good reason. What is the reason?
The reason is to try and keep city council meetings under control. If everybody could have a speaking proxy, we could have someone up there for that. So that, that's part of the control mechanism to keep city council meetings under some sense of control.
I think the control's over. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anybody else who would like to speak to city council? Okay, thank you all very much. At this time, we have the approval of the minutes. Okay, I haven't seen Dana yet. Approval of the minutes, the first minutes are for June 21st, 2022. Any questions or changes to those minutes? Seeing that, I'm very much pleased.
No more to approve. The minutes, regular city council meeting, Tuesday, June 21st, 2022. Ludeman, that's seconds.
There's very much discussion. On the paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
For Gensie, abstentions.
Thank you. Next up, we have the, another backup a little bit. Because of... Uh, because of, uh, council member Virginia's state, we can't approve those minutes, uh, because it would not be, be an approval by, by. Uh, so we'll put that approval off until that's in place. In fact, you were not able to attend the meeting on the twenty third.
Correct.
Then in both these cases, we will, uh, move these to the city council. At this time, we have the housing updates. Jack?
Well, city council, I'm here. Um, so we had our last meeting, our June twenty third. We learned, um, earlier in the week that, um, we were heading in and we were hoping to about the guidelines and the bylaws for the regional housing board. And we learned just prior to the meeting that, uh, we were, we needed to go ahead and sort of the IGA between the county and city to create a regional housing authority first. And then once we have the board staff for the regional housing authority, then, uh, that board will adopt the guidelines and the bylaws. So, um, that's what we're working on now. Um, at the last meeting on the twenty third, um, we learned about some things regarding, uh, the regional housing authority, the funding. There's been a mirror, the funding that was done to create, that's created from my position. Um, so that's the same money, the same place, the regional housing authority. And, um, so we still have some, I think some items that folks are bringing up. Um, and so my recommendation would be, uh, once we get that board seated, um, we will go ahead and present the guidelines again here specifically. And then the powers to the new board and maybe that. So that's the big update. A couple of other things that I wanted to let you know about, um, there's a housing board that has for mobile homes and they, if they have a value of twenty thousand dollars or less for the twenty twenty two tax year, they will be considered exempt chances. So that's super exciting. Um, and then also the assessment has been lower a little bit across the board, uh, for twenty twenty three. So that's also good news. As a, um, I really want to check the June twenty twenty two median home price. It was five oh seven five hundred. So we've got a big drop since those earlier numbers, um, enable, such and such, you know, we're at about about, uh, ten thousand dollars for, uh, June from me. And then, uh, some exciting news, we've been doing a matchmaking program, trying to grow up some rentals. I've been working with housing publisher with Christie, Rosa, and with Jamesy Heard. We've, uh, sent out a mass mail to, I think, everyone, so we should have the map. And from that, I've gotten ten leads, some people are interested in renting a space out of their house. Um, or, or, you know, they have signed, well, they're signed. Um, so that's exciting, uh, just sent that off to the fifty, forty people on my list for rentals. Um, and then just seeing my friend here today, she might possibly be there renting that room in her home too. So it's super exciting, um, we tend to have something else, it's gonna take a while. So, so that's my update. Any questions?
Thanks, uh, Max was, was asking and I'd like to also, yeah, a follow up timeframe for the housing authority foundation.
Uh, so we would like to see the IGA adopted that via July eighteen. So I'm gonna meet with the USCC in the morning, but I'm now regular meeting in the nick of you. At your regular meeting, we would love to see that get adopted if you're ready for that now. And that will form the regional housing authority. And then from there, we asked, and I would love to know which person from city council would like to sit on the board? And which other city boards, I would like to have, and I would need to consider the three of those members. I sent everybody an application, it's just a generic application, we'll start the process. If anybody that's interested, please, please forward it to them.
Okay. Uh, that's exciting, we are prepared to have that on you every week to the second.
Right, it's on the agenda and it, we need to have legal review. And so that is a goal to have it, have it agreed upon, at least legal review and a good draft for you all to consider for the July nineteenth.
We would be getting that ahead of time to be able to read through.
Yes.
Good question. Um, I don't know, we, we could, you could force here, I don't know, we'll be ready to, to select two people for that housing authority order of nineteen, but, uh, you know, city council decides that. We'll, we'll see whatever he thinks at that time and see if, if we're fully seated, then that could be a conversation ahead.
It would be a great call time strategy to check out for the bill of right applications.
Oh, that is true.
So I'm working on that update, I'm working on for, um, it's, it's due July fifteenth. And so, I, that's what I'm calling.
Oh, the grant due, due July fifteenth?
No, the update is just the update.
Okay, got it, got it. Well, then are we gonna be able to have the ordinance changes that you discussed in place before September first? Because September first is, is the application deadline, right?
That's, yeah, that's a fair question.
Well, yeah, that is, so that's our understanding. It, it, that is the application deadline, is that correct? Yeah. Yeah.
Dole has a list of things they wanna see and that's, that's one of the most important issues is, is, uh, you know, through, through our code, empowering enabling, uh, affordable housing, so.
And the county, the county just passed two amendments, uh, they've been certified support of housing and the de- process. And added ABUs to the district, so that's huge. So, so things are happening, um, besides the, the meetings that we've been having.
Okay. Any other questions for us, Philip? Thank you, Jackie. Uh, next up, we have the city administrator's report.
Great, thank you. I'd like to echo the thanks the mayor gave to the police department for the assistance for the Fourth of July play, which I think was great success. And I, Chief and I met this morning to talk about some of his recommendations for improvement. And as well as things go, there's always room for improvement. Uh, I wanna thank the streets department for their assistance over the weekend. Uh, we had folks, uh, in particular, Jim Schneider, who has come back out of retirement to help us. Uh, spent a lot of time this weekend repairing our sweeper. Because as you know, there was a lot of debris that ended up in a lot of places that, uh, it didn't start out in. So I'd like to thank the streets department for stepping up to do that. And a few other quick updates. We did receive the second half of our American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds. Uh, so that is, we've got two tranches of funds. We've already received the first, we just received the second, so that is good. That's part of the money that, uh, we committed to the employee retention program. And there's some other ideas. So Mayor talked about it at the last meeting about the, uh, real yard project for that money. So that's good that we have it. We have a planning director starting August twenty second. Uh, I would love to tell you who that is, but the person has not yet given notice at their current job. But we, we, uh, we have a commitment and so we're very excited to have this person join. I think when we talked about the planning director, we had, uh, thought that there were certain folks who would fit the bill perfectly. And, uh, I think this candidate fits the bill just great. He's from another, um, mountain town, uh, nearby and has experience with some of the stresses that we face in our community. Uh, is a senior planner in, uh, department there and has experience from the lowest to the highest level of tasks. And is, uh, very, 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 very excited to be in Level. So we're, we're very happy about that. A few other just quick updates, the Jimmy Johns matter, uh, it's council member Green here. Uh, she may not be, um, I have met with our municipal prosecutor to talk to her about that.
You don't admit it's on anymore. Why it is?
Whoever it is, it may need to mute them.
Okay. Uh, so we are handing that matter over to our municipal prosecutor to, um, look at and potentially handle for us. And we explained to her the importance of why that, uh, we have certain procedures that we need to follow for events in town. And apparently the, um, Jimmy Johns folks knew about it and did not follow our process. So, we'll keep, I'll keep you updated on that. Uh, our deputy city clerk, uh, Maida Silver is now in motory as of today. Congratulations, um, we are very happy to have Maida helping out with a lot of things that the position of deputy city clerk hasn't, uh, been filled for a while. So we're super excited to have some of those things done. Uh, we talked last time about electronic packets for city council. So an update on that, we have tablets ordered as of Friday, which should be here in time, hopefully to have them for your next council meeting. So that we can, I realize your packet's a little bit thinner this time, but, uh, you know, the last few meetings, the packets have been two hundred, sometimes four hundred pages. And I think it is, uh, more efficient for staff and less costly for the city to not print the packets that, uh, oftentimes just end up getting recycled. So that's the update on that. A few other things, um, Jackie Warhan mentioned about things you can see, will see on your next agenda. That intergovernmental agreement regarding the establishment of housing authority, uh, we'll have that. I'm, I'm hoping we'll have that for your consideration at the next meeting to make a decision on that. That is, it's a, a more or less time sensitive matter. The other issue to be on your agenda at the next meeting is, since you, hopefully we'll have a new council member at that meeting, a vote on the family program, which is something that was deferred at a prior meeting. So for questions on any of those, if you have, um, information that you need from the city to make those decisions, please let us know. Some of those are somewhat time sensitive. The other thing I wanted to update everyone on is, uh, the salary assessment. So like a lot of, uh, employers in town, we are facing the struggle of employee retention still. Um, we actually just lost an employee today, unfortunately, who was offered five dollars more an hour to work elsewhere. So that's unfortunate. Uh, as I mentioned, we were gonna, we were getting a salary assessment done by our human resources consultant. She is waiting from, for some more recent data out of Colorado Municipal League, which is coming out. It came out in June, but she's actually trying to get it broken up into better, um, categories for analysis. So I wanted the salary assessment sooner, we don't have it yet. We are facing a big problem with pay and retention and financial stress for our employees. And many, many communities are discussing a mid-year cost of living increase. And so, uh, it's an interesting discussion that is on the Colorado Municipal League Managers Discussion Group. Uh, pretty much every municipality who's weighed in has either done or considered a mid-year cost of living increase for their employees. Um, so that is something we, the mayor and I have talked about, that we would like to consider. County just passed today, uh, mid-year cost of living increase. And, uh, county manager Bergman is here and do you, can you, are you willing to give us the numbers on the increases, if you don't mind?
Um, so I presented to the board today and they passed a proposal for mid-year increases of five percent for staff making forty to fifty nine thousand, which is ninety eight FTE. And then four percent increase for certain staff making above fifty nine thousand, which is seventeen FTE.
Great, thank you, yeah. So the mayor and I have talked and what we will, um, propose for your consideration. And please, uh, if you have insight or input on this, please let me know. We are going to propose a four percent across the board, um, mid-year increase. And which is very consistent with the other municipalities that, uh, other municipalities have done an increase to some extent like what the county has done, but we are proposing just four percent across the board. Those are the things that I anticipate for the next meeting. And, uh, I think the other thing maybe unless you wanna mention it, the electric vehicle charging station is repaired, is that, and it is still up and working, so that's good news.
Amazing.
Yes, and, uh, I think that's it, so thank you.
I have any questions for Lauren?
I do, ma'am. I didn't mean to interrupt.
Oh, that's okay.
Um, how'd this private parking signs take down go?
Oh, that's a good question. So, uh, what we, I've seen that many of the signs have been removed, but the posts have not been removed. And that actually is a good reminder. So every Wednesday after council meetings, uh, we have a department head meeting. And that's where I bring up things that I'd like an update on. So we, you know, there's been a bit of transition in our streets department. So I will raise that issue and find out where we are on, is it, are you still seeing signs and posts or just posts? Just posts?
I think we should probably close out.
That's fine, yep, okay.
Smashed by a car, there's no, there's no reflective anything on it. I mean, I'm just thinking, going into winter right now, that, I mean, we're in summer, but I mean, I'm thinking, we'll say five months down the way, right, before the first snow.
That was supposed to be part of, of the process, which is you have to do the signs and posts.
Signs and posts. And similar to parking is, uh, have you had the opportunity to work on parking signs directing people to some of our parking areas?
That's, that's my job and we have to order those. I've been waiting until we get the contract completed with community banks. So we can have those in a matter of a week, once we're ready.
And my, not that we could have to look at the cost, my suggestion would be some of them be similar to the other wayfinding signs that we have around town rather than, you know.
I was gonna go white on brown. Which is what, what our streets are signs on, yeah. Should be, should be pretty clear, I was also thinking twelve line changes, which you did, I saw. Without being huge balls. And, uh, I set it up so that eight of them would be, I think, not a little, you know, the left hand arrow, the two right hand.
Okay, and you have a sign plan for where those are gonna go throughout the city? Okay. And just a comment about, uh, you know, the major season increase, it's kind of funny because it's almost like more, I'm supportive, but the more we make, the more prices go up, right? And so it's like, when's, when is the egg gonna stop chasing chicken around? Because what, we continue to get this, these increases in funding and we're spending more, increasing with demand, which is increasing cost of everything, it's kind of like, money doesn't make you happy, right? And sometimes I think that, uh, that four percent increase isn't gonna make or break anybody's salary. If you're looking at, to be perfectly honest, and this is just me getting on my soapbox, the city council hasn't seen any change since nineteen ninety one. The city council has made the same amount of money per year since nineteen ninety one, when Tim Hill's dad was on city council. He made the same amount. And if you're looking at the amount of time we are spending here in city council, we are at half, on average, half of minimum rate wage for our time here. If you want more people to be interested in city council, we have two volunteers ultimately going for city council for the vacant ward, because guess what? It is a volunteer position, volunteer position, that's what this is. I can't even go out to my, to dinner with my family once on the salary in a month. That's how low our, our remittance to this volunteer and our community service. So I'm happy to do that, but I'm also saying, our tides are supposed to rise all boats, right? Not just a couple, right? And, um, I think, I think that's an issue that we're gonna, with more demand, people going onto the housing authority board, people going to the lower board, people going onto the planning board, people going on everything, okay, my time's up. You get my point?
No, no, I do, I get you, I totally agree with it and have for some time. We can't change our official pay except in, in the year before an election, so.
Yeah, I don't care, we have to do it.
Yeah, we need to, it'll be in resolution and, uh, to increase and maybe consider should that be the zone.
Yes.
Receive a stamp.
It's the same example, it's the same stipend, yeah.
Totally agree.
I mean, yeah, I wanted to also hop on that as the youngest volunteer here.
Yes, yeah, thank you volunteer.
Um, yeah, it's rough, I mean, I don't have a house or anything like that. I'm literally here volunteering and I would love to get paid, uh, to do a job that I currently do. So I, I fully agree with that, that all wages have to. uh to do a job that I currently do. So I fully agree with that, that all wages have to go up. I'm just, and that would help so much with getting people active too, like compensating people for the work that they do tends to lead to better results usually. And I would love to have anyone here compensate, because I don't think any of us should be volunteering to stay till eleven o'clock.
And just point in case, when I missed last, last week?
Yeah.
It was because I went for one week assignment fire that paid a hundred times more than that time that I would have spent here on this.
So you have a suggestion for what could this should do?
No, I was saying, if you look around, if you look around, we are the least paid city council in the state of Colorado. I shared that um that, that article with you before. We're the by far over fifty percent less than the, the next one. And that's like Blue River, um which is not even a town of preference outside of Breckenridge, so.
I, I think the comments are, are fair, and I think that people who put their time in should be compensated fairly. So I think we can figure out the appropriate time to get that on the agenda. Let's put it on the agenda. Well, I, I mean, I think that it, my understanding is the council would have to vote on it, correct?
Uh that is true.
Yes. Yes. Yeah.
I'm sorry, this is not a time for public comment.
Mayor, to be clear, if it doesn't, if it means that my, our collective, whatever remittance doesn't raise up and it's for the next city council, thank goodness.
It has to be for the next election cycle.
Perfect.
Position.
Perfect.
So this actually is, is, is a good time to talk about this because I, I talked to Christie Dune, uh Department of Legislative Affairs about our budgeting process for twenty twenty-three. And so we're starting that process. And one of the things we're looking at scheduling for one of the next council meetings, I think it's in August, is goal setting. And what goals does the council have for purposes of, of setting the budget for twenty twenty-three? So this is good timing to bring these issues up to talk about it because it, we do want people who are willing to serve their community and feel as though their time is valued. And uh that is one of the ways you value people's time is you appropriately compensate them for it. So I think this is good timing and uh we can, I'll put a, I'm making a list of things that we should bring up and hash out in the goal setting. And uh I think that's, I think that's, I think that's fair. I've
I think goal setting is a big target.
Yep.
We actually started the process first we can set Ken last year.
Right. Okay.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Christian. Anything else? Any other questions uh for? Okay, thank you very much. My next up, we uh we will hear from Chief Edwards uh recording the Fourth of July.
Thank you for your time, City Council. This is just some insights that I saw as a result of this parade. Uh the T U P for this event is in effect for three years. I think it needs to be updated. Uh the document lists attendance at a hundred and fifty, not including, not including participants. And my estimate, my estimate of attendees is probably over a thousand people that are out there. The police department deployed at the event timed out at, at one hour, which is pushing, pushing the limits of C D O S definition of a quote delay in the context of closing the highway. Uh I would recommend that all side streets leading to the parade route be closed off with signage during the early morning hours, the day of the parade. The police department does not have sufficient staff to man roadblocks on the side streets. There were cars, as you stated, there were one car in particular that, that, that had to go, wouldn't move out of the way and people had to park the waters to let them out and and whatnot. I think putting signs out there earlier would, would help with, with that situation. Okay, this year's candy throwing onto the roadway was all resulted in numerous young children running out into the path of vehicles in the parade. I would like to suggest that candy throwing be strictly limited to pedestrians walking along the side of the roadway, disseminating the candy towards the sidewalks. Uh there, there was quite a bit of candy out there and a little, I lost count of the number, little toddlers I saw there scampering out there to get um when there's vehicles rolling down the road. A lack of signage along the detour routes leads to confusion, especially amongst out of town visitors. I'd like to recommend that large orange quote detour and arrow signs be placed at strategic intersections and along the detour route to aid motorists in navigating around the parade route.
Did we have any detour signs up?
No.
I didn't think so, because it wasn't, wasn't a closure. Okay.
Right, but I think that, I think that would be a good, good thing to do. Uh participants in the parade should be briefed on the route and quote rules of the road prior to the event. Police department staff noticed that the parade participants were not aware that the parade terminated on West Fourth Street and continued marching towards Third Street. We were fortunately able to head them off and send them off in the right direction. But I think, you know, discussing the route and uh you know, rules of the road beforehand would make things a little smoother. And finally, as much as I hate to say this, but given the current state of affairs in the United States, I would like to recommend that spotters and at least one sniper trained law enforcement officer be positioned on a rooftop that gives a clear view of the entire parade route. In the event, an active shooter gains access to a rooftop and starts shooting into the crowd, as just happened in the Chi- Chicago suburbs. There's some very disturbing information coming out about that and uh that, that, that situation is still developing, but it can happen anywhere. It doesn't matter. It could be a big city, it could be a small town. These things are happening all across the land. Uh this was a large event with participants and spectators exceeding the numbers in the T U P by a significant amount. I'd like to suggest that going forward, parade organizers meet with all participants to review parade planning and check the appropriateness, the appropriateness of certain types of parade activities, i.e. demonstrations, signage, et cetera. And uh thank you for giving these, these recommendations your consideration.
Any thoughts or some council questions for Chief? I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
You know, in terms of, I, I, I think your idea is correct and this is more to discuss this as well about more than parade routes, not throwing candy on the street. And, and you think people would have gotten the message, but they haven't. So uh Chief Edwards and I talked about a couple of options. So one is, I like his idea. If anybody wants to distribute candy, they have to start walking along the outside of a parade, parade route. And if they wanted to hand candy or throw candy, it's off of the, the parade, the, the main parade. So there's control. Somebody would throw candy to where their second possibility, uh the second part of that would be at the start of the event, we actually walk down that line and tell everybody, you can't throw candy out like that. It has to be done properly. And uh I think we're going to have to do that to get this right. Moon Days is the next big parade. These, they're better organized. Uh but it's the same issue, even though uh person having employees are not gonna have a car side traffic issues. Candy issues are not gonna change. And, and, and the public safety issue of possibly having spotters, uh that's not gonna change.
Yeah, I think, so the chief and I have discussed this, and I think that the issue isn't necessarily that providing candy to the kids, because we know that's one of the big draws to the parade. It's that people throw the candy in the roadway on the ground, not to the kids. They're throwing it on the street. And then you see the kids put their heads down and focus on the candy and run to get the candy. And if you're in a vehicle, you may not see a kid running to get a piece of candy in the roadway. And that's what we want to prevent. So we don't have a problem. We just need to make sure that the candy gets to the kids and not in the right of way on the roadway. So um the options are to have the, whatever, if you've got a folks, you know, handing them out, there were definitely people who had bikes and people handing the candy out. But if the people are gonna throw it, they need to not throw it on the roadway. They need to throw it to the kids at least past, I would say, the bike lane. So that you're not getting, I, I saw one parent trying to convince their kid that the bike lane was the barrier. And uh she was yelling at the kid because she's like, we talked about this, this is the barrier. And obviously kids are kids, they're gonna run for the candy. So we can't manage, we can't make the rules for the kids because kids are gonna go for the candy. We need to make the rules for the grownups to not create a situation where we're putting the kids in the pathway of a vehicle. And uh I do, you know, echo the closure of the side streets. Unfortunately, there was a, a passenger vehicle going the wrong way on the parade route um as people were in the parade. So that could have been there was a white uh passenger vehicle that came, it was right about at I would say around second, it, it ended up going a block or two and clearly freaked out and turned right and went east off the parade route, but was coming with the parade route was going south and the passenger vehicle came north at us.
Where was the police car down at the end of Harrison? On fourth?
They were at third.
They were at third. So did that car come past the police car?
I, I'd have to check with my, my guys. I, I
I had no idea if they were parked or came out of a
They probably came out of a side street or maybe a parking lot along the route.
Yeah, so I don't know, but I saw it and as soon as I saw that person, they were panicked and turned off the parade route, but they were on the parade route going the wrong direction again. We don't want someone to get hit.
Okay.
And I think that the, given this, given the situation with the active shooters that uh a- at the very least, we need to have, we need to have trained people on, on selected rooftops, just to, if, if nothing else, to to surveil those areas and make sure we don't have somebody uh coming onto a roof. And uh the, these types of parades along a narrow street like this are, I mean, it's, it's sad, but this is the world we live in.
We have a comment. Land, heard the level? Not?
Not, that goes, that goes up to your comments.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Any other thoughts on, on the parade and the possible future rules around the safety of the parade?
Oh. Man, I mean, it might not be for the parade, but like from just security in general. I mean, I did notice when I dropped off my ballot on election day that you had somebody that the uh county building had somebody checking folks to go into the building, uh that, you know, you had to scan your bags and everything like that. And I thought that was pretty interesting, although perhaps uh it led to some confusion, people feeling that they there was a ballot inside and then they just put it in a drop off box on the outside, so maybe not related, but perhaps maybe voter intimidation in the future. Think about people didn't feel comfortable going into the official ballot because of the, the security situation. But uh, um what about here? I mean, we have an open meeting here. I mean, can anybody think about, man, I don't know if that was just for the is that a permanent installment there at the county? Or was it just for the election?
Is, is, is it functioning now?
It, it, it is. I mean, I, my understanding is it was the court case, not because of
Okay, so it's gonna go away?
No.
It's gonna stay?
Here's, but you need to know that for the last year, I've, I've gone to the county and said, because they were, they were not use their old. I said, is there any chance that we could purchase that from the county? I don't know what the status on there is. I've, I've asked a couple, couple of times, but they have, they have one they use up at the, up at the court location. Now they have a front door, in which probably makes a lot more sense in terms of access points of building. Uh but I would, I would certainly as a city consider uh bringing the city council uh purchases of a used unit, which was still functional, just not as high tech.
You're, you're talking about a magnetometer?
Yeah.
Yeah. That, the, so it's, the old one is a magnetometer as well?
I, I don't know what it is. I know it functioned.
Okay.
Yes, the one upstairs, I don't, yeah. So is that still being used or?
Yeah.
Or you want it to continue using it? Okay.
All right, then we can ask the sheriff.
So I thought they were disposing that, that's why I heard a year ago, once the new one was in place, that's all. Okay.
I'm just bringing up the security of, of the, like, just government buildings in general.
Well, and we have a court also. Yeah, that's why I was, the majors, we want, especially for, for court. To have that in place, but we, we don't have that.
Something to consider in the future.
If you don't mind me asking, what did you pay for the new one?
Uh that was a grant, should be. I don't think it was under, the grants, it was a court security grant. Maybe a hundred fifty or a hundred seventy thousand dollars.
And how much of that, what was the match?
Uh for that, I don't, for security, I don't believe there was a match. It was just being staffed. Yeah, and the staffing is not trivial also, I mean, I think about providing power to it, I mean, you know, it took quite a bit of work to get power out to that.
And it has to be staffed?
Yes.
By one or more people?
Ideally, two.
That's a big deal. Good use of the justice center.
I'm using beautiful court.
Anyways, thank you for letting me.
Thank you. Anything else, Chief?
No, that's all I had. That's all I had. It's, yeah, it just, I mean, I see these things through the lens of public safety. Uh you know, it was a great parade, but I did think the, there's some things that concern me, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
We have resolutions that were business. Resolution of thirty series.
Actually, we are, you skipped over our um see conditions, uh COAs, UPS, T U Ps licenses, A A and B.
Sorry.
That's okay. You're just trying to keep us on track timing wise.
Yeah, that's, it worked.
Yeah, you, you cut like, I don't know, thirty minutes? There you go.
Can we delay enough that Dana's here with us today?
Oh, Dana's here. Okay, hi Dana.
Hi, sorry, it took me so long to find internet.
Okay, the timing is, is really perfect. Oh, at this time, we have, and this is going to be a public hearing. Uh this is a renewal uh for Roots RX. And currently, the way our, our, our city code is written, uh renewals will also vote in. Uh so we'll go through the process. Uh my name is Greg Wobbie and I'm the chairperson of the
I'm so sorry, mayor.
Yes, please.
This is Christiana.
Thank you, Christiana.
Um so uh marijuana license renewals generally should not be public hearings unless there's a reason to deny the license.
This is what doctors have.
I, well, we had that conversation today, but uh, uh I appreciate that. Thank you very much. This will not be a public hearing.
Thank you.
Can we confirm? We'll get that.
Okay. At this time, we have a new application uh for Roots RX. And so um I don't see anybody here representing Roots RX. Have they gone through the entirety of the process?
Um yes, uh they were approved by the lead bill, Marijuana Licensing Authority in October of twenty fourteen. And I reached out to both Fire Marshal and the Police Chief, along with the Police Admin Shannon. There have been no complaints. Fire Marshal did perform a fire inspection on June first of this year with no problems. And although there was no public notice required, no, and no complaints, um public notice was posted on their premises on June twenty-fourth of this year.
Thank you very much. Is there anything else on the staff report that we should know for, for this resolution?
No.
Uh so their, their business is good standing as far as we know.
Yes.
The city council have any questions? Hearing none, I'm going to take a motion, please.
Councilmember Luna Led moves to approve annual renewal um, July fifth, twenty twenty two for the retail recreational license for Rob Holmes. Our, that's CLV LLC, DBA Roots RX on one hundred forty Front Street.
Let's try this.
Is there any other discussion? Local office.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Leon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugency?
Yes.
Mayor Lobbie?
Yes.
And I would say also, all of our marijuana businesses, they've been around for a while now, it's really been consistent. Needs to be, um, so. Uh, next up, we have two sixteen Harrison Avenue, this is the Timberline mural request. Oh, they would like to put up on the building a location. Uh, where we would like for it to be.
And the applicant, Mel Lindquist, is here via Zoom, if you have any questions for her.
Okay, well, uh, now would you please present the city council on this mural, please?
Yeah, hi. So I'm working um, with my brother-in-law, who is an artist, primarily oil painting, but he does um, like just about everything. Um, and we've been batting around ideas for a long time about what we should do. We've gone down a lot of roads and we came back to just keeping it very, very direct and doing um, a portrait of a miner. He does a lot of portraits. Um, he does really, really nice work. We'd like to do the um, colors are not reflected in the sketch, but will be, he'll, he will be like in a mine, so it'll be kind of a dark background. And then he's hoping to play with the light coming out of his headlamp. Um, but it's pretty, it's pretty straightforward. I think that's the idea.
Thank you. Uh, and we may have questions for you. From a staff perspective, you said you presented this to the historic preservation commission?
Correct. They actually were pretty excited about it. Um, they liked the fact that there was going to be a mural further down at that end of town. I feel like as you come around the corner, coming into town, it was a good place for it. Uh, they also hope, the HPC was hopeful that it will have, cause other businesses to want to do more murals because they like the historic look and and bringing that historic feel back. So they liked the mural.
Any questions from city council or thoughts? Fireman?
Uh, is, who is the miner, number one?
His name?
Yeah, is there relevance to the miner?
Now, is any relevance uh, to this miner or is is this this miner?
Just a generic.
Simply anonymous.
He's he's anonymous.
Okay, and then my second question is, didn't the Timberline have a certificate of appropriateness for uh, some renovations that they were gonna do to the front facade of their building? And my uh, and what I will say is, is uh, from this question is, I would prefer um, seeing that work completed first before going for a mural. It's like, why am I going to ask for a mural to be painted? They they haven't even started the, the work on renovating their their timber line. And will that mural look the same and appropriate when that uh, renovation's been completed? And so I just think that there's a one-two punch here that the first punch hasn't been thrown by the opponent. And uh, for that reason, in person, I will not be voting in favor of this mural at this time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, now, tell us a little bit about the renovation of the building. You did receive a certificate of appropriateness uh, for the facade of this building. Can you give us the timeline of it?
Yeah, so we're just painting the building. We're not making any major, so we're talking about two twenty Harrison, which is the blue building. Um, we're not making any major, we've replaced the windows on the south side, on the same side of the mural. We, oh, we replaced all the windows actually on the second floor. Um, and then we're painting it, which we did receive approval on the color changes, but we're not, it it's it's matching the, what the building is right now. So we're not, the the building's gonna be a light gray with uh, dark black trim. Um, and we are, the reason to do it um, that we'd like to do, I mean, we'd really like to do this. We have it scheduled, hopefully, we have the artist ready. Um, if this is approved, to do it at the end of this month, like to um, come down, I think, July sixteenth. But we're getting scaffolding to do the actual painting, um, and we're prepping all at the same time. So it does go together pretty well. Um, and there isn't going to be, I mean, it will look better with a fresh coat of paint, but this is, we're not making major changes to the exterior of the building outside of the mural.
Um, I'd like to ask staff, why do we have to go a COA for just painting?
It it was also the windows. They were replacing the windows and the their COA was approved for exterior painting, but also the windows, and the windows are what made it become a substantial COA. Um, that's all been approved, and as as she stated, they are going to be painting at the same, kind of the same time that they're doing this side. Um, as you know, I don't know if you know this or not, but Mick, her husband Mick Lindquist, other co-owner of the Timberline is on the HPC now. And he kind of let us know a lot of plans down the road. Eventually, they would love to just turn the brick, like the others have done, because it's been painted so many times, they can't remove paint, they're gonna but that is years down the road because it is such an expensive endeavor. But the painting is approved, they had two years within that COA to do the exterior paint. Um, some of the other portions that were on the COA, like a little patio in the, in between the buildings and stuff, was also already done. The painting is the only thing that hasn't been done yet. But I think will be done around the same time and will not affect the mural. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, maybe I'm getting this COA confused, but I thought the front facade, that the lower part of the building was it was part of that that was supposed to get completed as well. I could be messing it up with another.
And I would have, I would have to go back and check, honestly.
Yeah, there there isn't.
That's what you.
The entire little part.
Yeah.
And we did.
There was.
They exposed the tubes to the hulls that had been ripped over.
Yeah. So that section. They, they weren't doing anything with this here?
That was my honest view.
That's too bad.
Uh, just, I mean, I know this is a point, but it's pretty interesting that they're gonna turn the bricks, maybe sometime in the future. In which case, it would go back to the original brick color, is that? And would that be the front and the side now, if you guys did that?
I, yeah, so that's, so this is, this is Mick's dream to do that. I don't see.
I was gonna say, this, she's probably gonna kill me for bringing this up.
Yeah, that's like, if we are the most profitable motel in Colorado, we will turn all the bricks, but that's a conversation for a different time.
Well, I think because of, because they're turning the bricks on other buildings, buildings in Leadville, including
Yeah.
the Kable Opera House and and they've done that with with the water.
Yeah.
There, there is, there are historic tax credits and grants available.
Okay. Okay, yeah, yeah, it's certainly something we would love to do. Yeah, thank you for telling me that.
Any other questions from city council or thoughts?
May I ask if councilmember Fugency is, have we answered your question?
Well, I I'm just asking the city council, do we want a twenty-five by eighteen miner with his arms crossed as our welcoming person coming into our city? I mean, it will keep our home prices down perhaps, and keep to our historic nature, right? But I mean, is this what we truly want, is our gateway mural coming into town? That's the question I have. If, I mean, I know it's their building, but like, what is our, what are we supposed to do here with this? Is this, you turn the corner, the first thing you see is a miner crossing his arms with with the, with the, you know, some sort of overalls in a headlamp. Uh, when was the last time, are we truly gonna hold on to our mining heritage like this, considering now we're doing all of these other recreation events and people are coming here with second homes? And literally, the only mine is climax, it's, I mean, there's a couple, but I'm just asking, is this truly what we want? As our gateway mural coming into the south side of our town is in a miner?
Well, I would say this to you, I mean, I don't disagree because my first thought was, I don't love it. Uh, but my second thought is, uh, and Christiana may wanna wanna chime in with this, but I don't think we can, I I'm not sure in this case, on a mural, if we can control content. Christiana?
Thank you, mayor. I was about to pipe in to say just that. Um, so basically, besides size, number, um, restricting commercial speech and text, um, local governments shouldn't be putting other regulations on murals, so the content of a mural isn't something that um, the city can regulate.
That's awesome.
Well, I mean, I understand, I understand that that is the law. At what point in, nothing to do with this mural, this, just a hypothetical, at what point can a city control what is, to to councilmember Fugency's point, the first thing that people are gonna see when they drive into town? Um, the, you know, it could be a lot, be a whole lot worse than this, uh, depending what the content is. And where do we have the right to draw the line?
Um, so I I can look at that a little bit more, but right now, um, what I can tell you is that local governments can regulate, like I said, the size of a mural, the number of murals. Um, the commercials, whether there's commercial speech on murals and uh, text on murals, and that's it. It's, it's uh, it's not much.
I mean, I think that, you know, certainly a community is is entitled to work with an artist, to make suggestions or to, you know, have something mirror the character of the community, but I, I think what Christiana is saying is there are legal limits on denial of a request for a mural on content. And so uh, I'm sure we can find plenty of cases that have been litigated for communities that have said, you know, and I, I mean, you 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 probably know, right, there's a, there's a lot of litigation over, you know, profanity and other types of uh, you know, nudity, and where, where does a community draw the line? I'll tell you, it's been litigated over and over. Can you work with an artist? Of course. I mean, if there's suggestions, you can certainly make them and and discuss them with the the muralist and the the applicant. Uh, but I think, you know, purely saying, we're gonna deny this because we don't like the content, is, as Christiana said, problematic. So I think now is the time to maybe discuss that, and if it is uh, but there are suggestions to find if the applicant is willing to consider those. And we've certainly done that with other projects that weren't.
Yeah, thank you. I would just, um, I mean, my own personal opinion is that that I really like the fact that Leadville has lots of murals. I would have to say I personally don't like the artwork in a lot of our murals, and many of them are done by the same person. But that doesn't change the fact that I don't like the idea of murals. And so I really welcome and embrace another mural that's done by a different artist, you know. I would like to see more, um, just a variety of art styles in the murals in Leadville. Um, and uh, so I welcome it. I don't, I don't, um, I don't love it, I don't dislike it, I welcome it.
Thank you. Um, to your point, Max, like I said, I don't love it, you know, when I deliver it, but also, just what you said, the size is so huge.
It's over half the height of the building.
Yeah, no, I, so, uh, we could have that conversation about what we accept as a size for that mural in that building. Should it be more appropriate with other murals in town? Uh, but then you have the ladies at Leadville, which would be four times the size, you know, it's on the side of the bike shop, so.
It's a, it's a tough, it's a, it's a, I'm glad that we've had this conversation. I didn't know that we uh, only could, we couldn't deny it based on its content, but just the size of the mirror? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, as it, we, it could, let's just put it this way, it gets a little prickly when you get into regulating the content. So it 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 can be problematic. You clearly have jurisdiction to decide you know, size and location. After that, getting into content, like I said, is I can tell you, it's been litigated over and over, what, you know, can you, what can you show? Perhaps, part of a person's body, what is profanity? I'm not kidding, I mean, that's, that's the debate, so it is, uh, let me just say, it's a, it's a little more prickly to get into content.
I, I am not one to know what the right size would look like on this building. Uh, but the way it's superimposed on this building, it is quite large.
Do you have any suggestions?
It's a good question. I don't, because I don't know what, I don't know where my jurisdiction lies.
And if I'm not mistaken, the point of this being fair is is they have to go up enough over the hotel part of the building that is just right next door to it to be able to be seen, so it's up in that corner. And so that's, that's it's just, I think it's a location and it would be more up in the corner than you're seeing. It is superimposed, that's not a final type. But it's four hundred and fifty square feet.
Is it that much bigger than the uh, than the sign for the UHV business down the road?
Well, the answer is yes, yeah, but it's probably four or five times the size. And, and, let's, let's go around. Uh, Dave, do you have any suggestions about this at this time?
Uh, no, I'm in favor of it.
Christian?
Uh, make it not another white guy, please. What else to say? It's literally every single portrait of any person here is white.
I do understand that, but from an historical context.
I understand it too, I just don't.
If he's spongey. Dude.
Uh, I'm I'm not in love with it, as as you stated, um, I'm not I'm not opposed to either welcome another mural, um. Obviously, we have a rich mining heritage in town. I don't mind it being a little gritty. I think, well, you know, that's good quality that you have. Living up, living in the environment you live in, you need a little grit. Um. It is big, um, if um, maybe a recommendation of twelve by twenty would not be agreeable?
We could say twenty tall, whatever the aspect, Christian, you know. Well, twelve or twenty by two, yes.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know either, but.
I, I, I would be in favor of that. I think that might be definitely changed to make it a little more helpful, they can put higher.
I think I would like to actually see, I mean, we're just kind of throwing numbers out there, which
Yeah, yeah.
bothers me a little bit. I'd, I'd like to see what that proposed size actually looks like on the building, because a mural like this will all also uh, be a it, it would be bad if it were too small, too, I would say.
Yeah. Be clear, that's all, I hadn't thought about that, that's a good point. Um. I mean, I, you know, it's just suggestion, uh, you don't have to live by that, but.
Can I, um, just make a recommendation? Sorry, this is now.
Yes, now, please.
Yeah, so the size is, we submitted this pretty quickly on, um, we worked with Lori to get this into this meeting, so we submitted it last week. Um, the size is the max size, so that is not, the artist has not set on that size, and we've, I'm with the artist this week.
Um, the size is the max size, so that is not, the artist has not set on that size, and we've, I'm with the artist this week, actually. And we've been talking about, he also thinks that's very big, and he's been thinking about bringing it in. Um, two feet as a border from the edges, so if you can look. So it would be two feet below the top of the building, two feet from the left and left side, and probably, probably a little more than two feet from that, the window on the right side. Just to give it some, um, like a little breadth, so we are amenable to that, if that.
So we were talking about bringing it, to make sure I understand, because if we, we have to put it in the resolution. Uh, you were suggesting we come in two feet from the top or two feet from the bottom? Were you talking about the top and the bottom and the side?
Yep, we're talking about, we're talking about the, all of it, we're talking about the top and the bottom and the size, but primary, it will probably hug. The front of the building, do you know what I mean? So it would be two feet from the, if you're looking at the rendering right now, two feet on the left side. Two feet on the top, two, probably more than two feet on the bottom, and probably more than two feet on the right. But if we agree at two feet, then.
Two feet at the top, two feet at the bottom, and two feet on the right. As in, you know, if we put it in that way, would that be acceptable?
Yeah, is that acceptable? That, I'm, yeah, yes, that's what I'm asking. Could we agree on that today, so then we could keep our timeline and, um, work with the paint?
What's, what's, like, about that being possible?
I can accept that.
Christian?
Uh, my friend, I think he'll be abstaining regardless.
Max?
You gotta, I, I mean, I gotta give the owners credit for revitalizing this building, I mean, you know, coming into our town and. Is, so the south facing windows, are they replaced now? So is this an old picture of this building?
This, yes, this is, I'm sorry, this is an old picture of this building, so the, all windows on the second floor of the building have been replaced since, uh. Maybe November, anyone's went in, so they've been replaced for a while, and the courtyard is also complete. Um, so it's just the painting of the building that's left. But I'm sorry, that is an old picture, I didn't realize that.
Dana, uh, any thoughts from you?
No, I'm still in favor. I trust, I trust the, the, I trust the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Uh, in which case, I would entertain a motion this time.
Sorry, I'm trying to find the. I'm on two different devices, I'm trying to find the verbiage.
Just trying to.
And Mayor, did you want?
Two, two feet from the top, two feet from the bottom, two feet from the right side.
From the original dimension, reduce the size, almost to prove the timber lines. Uh, mural to be painted on the southern, this is brick wall, two sixteen person. Avenue facing Harrison. With the dimensions reduced. From twenty-five by eighteen by two feet. On the top, two feet on the bottom, and two feet on the east side.
My other side.
Three seconds.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? We'll call this.
Councilmember here?
Yes.
Councilmember Lina Lan?
We. It's staying.
It stays in the. By, 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 well, certainly.
Okay, I did not know that, thank you.
Mayor Proton Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Frigenti?
No.
Mayor Lottie?
Yes. Uh, thank you, it passed on a three to vote. But now, thank you very much, uh, and, and also, we do appreciate it, I mean, you guys have done, uh, with the town and doing, and, uh. So if you want to.
Thank you very much.
But next up, Mayor Resolution Number Thirty, can I go to Resolution Thirty?
Is it time for Resolution Thirty?
Yes.
Okay, then again.
It's a little past time.
Oh, yeah.
Fifteen minutes.
Then he needs to read it really, really fast.
Resolution thirty-two, a resolution filling a city council vacancy at a point, you, the city council member. To represent award two, uh, in your packet, you will see, uh, two applicants. Who have applied for seating as a city council member award two. Uh, we have Rod Weston, and we are sharing that. We've had a chance to read their letters, um, and, of interest, and, and their resumes. And so it's my, we will choose which one of these two people, uh, you see as a city council member. Until the next election for that award, and do you know what that is?
So, in the, uh, sorry, I mean, interrupt, but in the, uh, resolution. Does that council member Tharp's, um, elected position would end in twenty twenty-five? However, that, I don't believe that is true, I believe his. Own position will be in twenty twenty-three, and my seat is up in twenty twenty-five. Because we were elected in the same cycle. So one gets a two-year, and one gets a four-year term. I was decided by the votes, of which I received more votes than this is going to.
Okay, thanks for remembering that.
However, with the, um. With the change in, um, forthcoming change in, uh, payment per council, nevermind. You should just. You guys, everybody.
Good job.
But anyway, his term is up to twenty twenty-three. From what I understand.
That's, that's good, so in twenty twenty-three, that person will have to run for reelection. Okay, great, uh, we have two applicants, we have one applicant who's here, and I would ask that applicant to come up and speak to the council about. Your desire to be on some council.
Good evening, I was prepared to speak, I was showing up as to, uh, to be aware that I am interested in filling this position. Um, I've been here for a long time, about twenty-five years, um, here in December. I had taken an interest, wrong way, in matters, I think, something that. We felt like, uh, now was the time that I could get back to our community and fill, uh, this position if I were to be chosen.
And I let the applicants know that we were considering their applications this evening, uh, and I did not let them know that the mayor was going to put them on the spot to speak, so. My apologies to the applicants, but, uh, yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Do you have any questions for me?
Yeah, please.
I just briefly in my letter, because I wasn't quite sure what you wanted to know, uh, you know, so I'm happy to answer questions.
Question I would ask is, you know, we have meetings at least two times a month, probably closer to three times a month. And, and Max says maybe four times a month. Uh, we just want to make sure whoever is willing to take this position is, is, uh, understands that obligation, that really is an obligation. Uh, to attend and, uh, and, and also to, to the best of your ability, everybody has full-time jobs, uh, doing the homework.
And, and respectful of that, and that's a consideration. I do work outside of the county, but feel like as long as things are planned and on my calendar. I can, uh, make sure that I'm able to attend, uh. When I'm supposed to attend, I don't do well with, you need to show up tonight at six o'clock, uh, things that I can't.
There's, there's another aspect of this that really, uh, probably hasn't showed up anywhere else, but city council members have also, uh, heard a renewal for re-boardment. And that's a separate obligation that meets once a month.
That's where the fourth comes in.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's the point.
And, and just to, to be clear, that those, uh, meetings, you can attend virtually as well as these meetings to attend virtually.
Virtual option. Okay, uh, but that, that never shows up in the job description for this council.
I guess, let's turn my.
Uh, those are four o'clock on the second Tuesday of each.
I might not make the first one, but I'll do my best to.
No, I understand, there's people, we, we understand that, uh, because of all time, so it can, it can be, it can be a challenge.
Thank you, I appreciate my hands up.
Any other questions? Shannon?
I have a question. Yeah, after you, what you've seen here for the last.
Don't ask that question, no, you, no, can't ask that question, cannot.
Do, we haven't scared you away. Okay. Well, that's, that's a brother fresh air.
And there is the issue of lack of pay? There is not much compensation for a lot of work, so, just so you know, that's what the situation is.
Can we have a bad advice?
Matt, we're just trying to make sure that we're honestly.
Christian, Dana, any warnings?
Sometimes there's a candy bar in the meetings.
I, I love city council, I have no warnings, I mean, you're kind of a pain in the ass sometimes, but it's great.
Well, when we decide it's the process, uh, so, is it a voice vote?
Yes, so Christian, our city attorney, uh, has some, uh, had, has done some research and has provided some information to you all about how the vote should occur. And, uh, her advice is that the, uh, vote occur, uh, in, in the public meeting. And as you can see on the staff report, uh, there's the proposed motion. Where there's a motion language and that the, uh, where you're selecting the candidate, you can fill that information into the, um. Into the motion language, and it is to fill the vacancy for Ward Two, for the term remaining for Ward Two. So we don't have to correct any date if need be in that, it's just a.
Should we simply do a voice vote?
Uh, yes, uh, the city council should have any discussion and just do a voice vote, um, in, in the public meeting, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. And regarding the, I, I'm sorry, just really quick regarding the date, because the resolution, the motion is to approve the resolution, but the resolution does have the. Twenty twenty-five date in it, so the resolution should be amended just to say the remainder of the term for this seat in Ward Two. Uh, we should confirm, uh, the end of the term, um, instead of saying the specific year.
Okay, we'll, we'll include that in the motion for the resolution. Uh, is there any, we have two candidates, uh, Rod Weston and Chen Gria. Uh, is there a discussion? Any thoughts on this candidate?
I have a couple of comments regarding, uh, candidate Rod Weston. Uh, I'm gonna keep this short and tame. Uh, but I would be remiss if I didn't say anything. Uh, the last meeting that we had about housing. Uh, there were some comments made by Rod that. Um, be pretty outlandish. I'm not putting it as nicely as I can. Further, I've been in quite a few meetings with Rod. And have found that most of his input is inflammatory and generally counterproductive. Um, so for those reasons, I will not be supporting mine.
Sure, thank you, uh, Christian? Sure, um, also, like I said, it's a lot, uh, with my conversations with him and working with him, I. Um, have seen him as, as someone who is understanding and willing to talk about these issues that are. Um, outlandish and out there, because ultimately it's a change of pace, it's something that. Challenging the system is important in many ways, um, I don't come here lightly, I challenge all of you all the time, and I'm sure it's not fun sometimes. But I appreciate that to the utmost, I appreciate anyone who speaks up, um, in opposition, regardless if it's a popular or unpopular. They, and speaks their mind regardless if their mind is correct or incorrect. And the statements that they've made, it speaks true to their, uh, Rod's heart, and I think, you know, everyone has their own opinion. Right or wrong, and I hate to dock him for that, and in my experience working with him, it's been pleasant. Always open for conversation, always open to talk about the issues that you may disagree about. And for that reason, I'll be supporting him and chatting, I wish I worked with you more often to know what you're about, um, and. How to, can work, um, through these issues, but I just have a closer relation with Rod, makes me lean that way more.
Thank you. Dana, any thoughts? You don't have any thoughts, but if you have something, we should.
I have thoughts, um, I don't think there is as. Well, uh, thought out as the last two, but, um, I share the same concerns as Tim. I do, do think as a, as a body, that, you know, we all have our opinions and we often differ, and. We are nevertheless, um, I think respectful, and, uh, at least in the meetings that I've been in, have not been terribly. Um. Uncomfortable, um, and I, I, because of a, a long distant history of Mr. Weston. Coming to a variety of different meetings, I share Tim's concerns about the, um. Perhaps the presentation of opinions that would not, that would cause more, um. Dysfunction, uh, rather than discussion in the group.
Thank you very much. Max?
You really want me to be a bull in the china shop? All right, here we go.
You don't, you don't have to.
Okay, then I won't be.
Welcome to your opinion.
I will be Angel Fluff, instead of the Bull in the China Shop, that's how, it will be Angel Fluff, now I'm thinking about, uh. Diversity of what we need out here and just like. Who do we need to help represent their, our, our city? And, I mean, both Rod and, and also you, right? You have Shannon, you both have gone up and through the school systems, Rod is retired, you're an assistant principal, right? That, so you've had similar career path, you're still working, he's retired, uh. Shannon's been here for twenty-five years in our community. Rod has been here for about six or seven years, I think, from he got back from Alaska, so he hasn't been here as much, and speaking for myself. I've only been here for eight or nine years, I'd like to have somebody that's been here, that can represent the community, who's raised their, their children here in this community. Uh, and also perhaps brings different perspectives, uh, when we're coming through the Housing Authority, uh, she works over in Edwards. Uh, and so she's bringing that other perspective, the Housing Authority, and what that means for what we're trying to do, uh, with that regional housing authority, so. Um, I don't have anything negative to say, I'm just thinking about what, what would I want to see in my city council, and I, I want somebody to be here. That's deep in this community, who's raised their family here, um, and, and can probably have that type, so. I can see, probably see where I'm leaning, uh, for this vote.
Um, I'm gonna keep my thoughts to myself. Um, maybe, hopefully, most typical circumstances. Um, the last words before we go to the. This this time, we'll take a voice vote, and each person will, you know, uh is an open vote. We'll tell, we'll just uh say the name of the person that they would like to support to fill the ward to the city council mates.
Councilmember Hill?
Shannon Grant.
Councilmember Lumen Leon?
Rod Weston.
Mayor Proton Green?
Shannon Grant.
Councilmember Fregency?
Shannon Grant.
Mayor Lonnie?
Shannon Grant.
Four votes for Shannon. Grant and one vote for Rod Weston.
And just to check with our city attorney, do we need to uh do the proposed resolution language? Or is the voice vote sufficient?
Uh we should still do the motion to adopt the resolution, because otherwise the resolution won't be adopted.
And should we adopt that with the language that the uh the term, the end of that term will be determined?
I'm sorry, I don't see the date on the proposed motion. It just says to fill the vacancy on city council.
And I think that I think our city attorney just wanted to clarify for that we need to change the resolution itself, the date in, but not the motion language. So I think if you um when you look at the language, you could just say I'm gonna pull it up right now, that it's for the second, the remainder of the term for that vacancy. Because we just need to clarify that, so.
The motion to adopt Resolution thirty series twenty twenty two, a resolution filling a city council vacancy, an appointment of city council member to represent Ward two A and appoint Shannon Grant to fill the vacancy on city council for the remainder of that term. Fregency seconds.
Is there any other discussion? We'll call those.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Lumen Leon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Fregency?
Yes.
Mayor Lonnie?
Yes. Now, my question for you, we've done it. The every now and then it's been done a different way. So uh and and I'm I'm applying with this to this process. Very well. Uh but in the past, we have also ceded that city council member immediately upon the conclusion of the vote. Is that appropriate or is it not?
I think that's fine, Mayor.
Chen, would you like to come up here and see?
Congratulations.
Do you have a packet for Shannon?
Uh well.
We're getting we're getting one right now.
Yeah, you can take mine.
I also didn't wonder about this part as well, so lessons learned.
Thank you. Uh next time, we have Resolution of the thirty one series of twenty twenty two, a resolution offering of political contribution for the Community Justice Center and authorizing negotiations for intergovernmental with Lake County.
Uh I think what the plan, Commissioner Feedler is here to answer questions as well, but uh I was gonna kick off the presentation on this, so we have had a number of presentations about the details of the Community Justice Center, uh the cost of the Community Justice Center, and and I I wanted to update you on um just a couple of things. We have this before you for decision this evening, because the county is rapidly working on a deadline with their design crew and need to know is the city in or out as far as including our uh police department. So we're at the decision point and which I indicated that we would be uh at your last meeting to prepare you for this. Couple of things I wanted to let you know. Um have had extensive meetings uh with Chief Edwards and the design crew and myself. And Chief Edwards feels that the space is appropriate for uh in size for the police department. He there will be some tweaks to the design, but you can see in the packet, um what we have included is the color, hopefully, uh comes out in color. Uh the design of the layout right now and uh Chief Edwards is comfortable with that allotment of space. He'll make it work. There is room for, you can see, his department to grow. Um there's also, we he and I have talked about some ways that we can be creative with the space if there is growth beyond what is designed um in blue right now. Uh but so we can be flexible with the space that is allotted to the police department. I've also met with um Chief uh the uh Judge Floyd, and she is comfortable with the space allotted for her municipal court as well. So your first, the first thing is, space is adequate for the city. The second part about it is, and I I think you've heard me say before, I think the the city belongs at the Community Justice Center. It makes sense logistically. It makes sense for departments working together better. It makes sense for the city to have better police department space. We are at capacity right now. The the police department has outgrown the space that they are in right now. They do not have space for the additional um personnel who are actually at the academy right now. So they need the space. The space is going to be uh good for their needs for a good, long time in the future. The the second part about that is the cost. And uh that's that's the tough part. That's it. It's a huge decision for this council to make a decision on the cost. We, I've worked with Commissioner Feedler, and the county has been um very amenable to work with us to put a cast a cost cap of five million dollars. So what this means is the city is gonna commit five million dollars, and um the county would be taking the risk should the space cost more than that. We're we have dedicated poor space that will not be cut if there are additional costs at some point down the road. The county is um very understanding and gracious in that they understand that that the majority of the cost commitment to this project is theirs and um that we are a part of that, but also a small part. So our cost cap is five million dollars. And uh the county is going to go get a certificate of participation for essentially the cost to build this facility. And that the arrangement would be that's their, the county's debt. It would be the debt to build the entire facility. The city's committing five million dollars towards the cost of that. We would pay that, plus we have a cap on operating costs of eleven percent, which is essentially the amount of space we're getting. It's like ten point eight percent of the floor space is ours. So I feel like that's a fair cap on our operating costs. So my comfort level goes way up when there is a cap on our financial financial commitment to this project. And so what you have before you is a resolution which says, in essence, uh county, please go ahead and and design this building and construct this building on the assumption that the police department and the city is going to be included and that we will negotiate an intergovernmental agreement or IGA with the county with the specific terms, but that the key terms um that allow us to move forward at this point are included in the term sheet, which has the cost cap of five million dollars. Uh that would include interest. We would need to uh we would need to include interest on that if we pay that in installments, which I suspect the city would, and that there's a cost cap of eleven percent on operating costs. Uh that and the other, some of the other uh terms in there about the participation in the executive committee. I'm happy to answer questions, but we've gotten to the point where, you know, in meetings before, we've talked about the the facility and the need for facility and the general concept for the community, but now we get to sort of talking about the brass tacks of it. And uh I am comfortable at this point with the cost cap and the cap on operating costs, saying that I believe that the city belongs in this building and with these financial assurances, I feel much more comfortable about that commitment. And at this point, I rather than take up more time and talk to you, I would ask if there's questions that I can answer or Commissioner Feeder can answer. We are uh happy to do so.
Um I I know you and I have a conversation today.
Yes.
We agreed in principle.
Yes.
Uh about how this is defined, how the city would go about paying this, and I remember saying, I felt like it was uh too specific. In in rather than being a lot invested aside, having that face. Um and so I would like for that to be considered in this, if city councils need it, but would you discuss that?
Absolutely. Thank you for reminding me. So if you look at the resolution where uh it talks about the section one, the recitals, section two talks about the financial contribution. And it indicates that the city council would authorize a financial contribution by the city and not to exceed five million dollars, which shall be paid to the county in a combination of an upfront contribution and installment payments or just installment payments. The mayor brought up a very good point, which is, what if we want to pay in a lump sum? What if there's a possibility somewhere, somehow, for us to not have to pay installment payments? So what if it's an upfront contribution in a lump sum? And I think that's a good uh relay to give us, should there be an uh ability for us to pay some of this rather than installment payments, to give an upfront payment or a lump sum in some sense. So I think it makes sense, and I talked to our city attorney today about this, that it we can certainly make a a modification in the motion to include in this sentence here that the amount could be paid. Uh you know, sort of a like it could be lumped sum. Some at some point, it could say just installment payments over the term of the county certificate of participation. It says comma or lump sum, comma, subject to annual appropriation. Something along those lines.
I have a question, and that's terms of re-legalizing, so I might have missed it, but what what is the the time? What's the timeframe of the installments?
Well, so that is a good question. The county has proposed that it would be the same term as the certificate of participation that they negotiate. So the county is going to go essentially borrow the money, and their uh thought is twenty plus twenty five, thirty years. And so the the proposal in the in the term sheet is for the installment payments to at least be potentially as long as the county's term. As we've just discussed, it could be shorter than that. We could, in in essence, I mean, I guess you could say we could negotiate a no prepayment penalty. So i- i- at least as long as the term of the county's certificate of participation was the idea. And just to give you some ideas, there was a prior presentation uh by uh Katie Walter, who is one of the leads on the project, and her she presented this, and I'm gonna try and pull this up. Her estimates um the city's annual payment at a four percent interest rate, which you know, who who knows if that is still realistic, but four percent interest rate, if it, the city was at five million dollars, which is what we're capped at, a payment over a term of thirty years, the annual payment would be about two hundred and eighty nine thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Obviously, you go shorter than that, the um the amount goes up. So twenty five years would be three hundred and twenty two thousand fifty nine dollars.
Um I would also like to bring up another possible point, and it's actually to discuss, and uh and then would be to some taxi uh for this story. Now, we had one uh Laura member who said, why you can't do that. Uh so I did some research, and I talked to uh they, there's a a person who is the um authority uh from your area, and and he is advisor to downtown Colorado Bay, and he's also uh the the urban realtor authority manager for Westminster, who had it for a long, long time, and they have five urban realtor places. And and I said, can we do this? Can we can we help buy the a public building, the finance of the public buildings? He says, absolutely. We've done it. Everybody does. So he was he was quite sure we could do this. So with that in mind, we'll discuss it in the L D R interview, you know, the twelfth, and I'd like to bring it up. It is uh right now, in twenty eighteen, we have a projection for phase one of the rail yards uh that over twenty five years, it would produce twelve million dollars in timber. Now, based on, you know, what's happened, we chose to assess values. Who knows what that number would be actually. But so that was phase one. If you add phase two, which is similar to phase one, let's say a conservative investment would be twenty four million dollars. We have committed four point one million dollars that the developer gets as they earn. I mean, they have to produce that money or get it. Uh people say, well, we gave you money, we give a dollar. You know, they have to, they have to actually earn every dime of that. Uh so the point I'm trying to make is, we have, and 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 believe me, it's still my my firm uh goal to help these downtown built business owners, building owners refurbish on the avenue. Uh but we are going to have a lot of money on hand. Now, the also the news is, and this has been discussed, uh for instance, let's say we pay X amount uh to to the the county uh for this building, they don't have to wait twenty five years to get that much. They could, we can give them a letter of obligations against X amount of timber, and they can take that to a living institution, and that living institution can live against that that disaster. Now, we've always heard that the return is about eighty five cents a dollar. Uh in talking to Steve, this Steve Art, the Westminster Urban Real Authority, he said they just underwent a bond, which Urban Authority also did, for forty five million dollars, but they only got thirty six million out of it when they financed it, which is eighty percent turn on investment. So there's a lot to learn about that. Uh and that would that would be, that would be the obligation for when we gave the letter of obligation two uh to find out how they could finance that letter of obligation, but there are living institutions uh who who uh who syndicate uh these. And and and, you know, so it's not as complicated as they say. And so I would say at least part of this uh could be taxed into the, and that's our, just what, and that's one of the reasons I didn't want it so closely defined as to how we would pay for this.
Any other questions? Uh yeah, this is for John Feedler specifically, if you want to head up to the stand. Um and this question is more so just for it to be on the public record, I already made up my line on how this goes, but um would you or would you not say that this justice center is more of a justice center fulfilling the needs of the legal needs of, you know, courts and optimizing the organizational side of that uh more so than providing a abundance of community justice, the same way that other presenters that presented community justice in um other counties such as New York?
Yeah, I think it's fair to say, well, first of all, I mean, in my understanding, this is a Colorado statutory requirement, the county gets at the core requirement is to have safe and adequate detention and courtroom space, and that is what we sort of have to do first, just by by the letter of the law. And while the other space is sort of for example, having the sheriff's office, I think, have sheriff's office there, state jail, state court security, just a cooperational and there. Um so I think, you know, that is certainly correct, you know, if that's what's driving the the building and 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 the, you know, shut down jail, and I will say, yeah, and then when we look at the current space that we can afford, you know, the the majority of the work of those statutory needs and, you know, the operation needs of the sheriff and police office. Um I will say, you know, I see the way we're trying to design the building, you know, that's the main part of some of the law, of course, in the form, you know, and community oriented aspects of that that's needed. I really won't have a ton of public meeting space. Uh you know, it's not the, as you were referring to, you know, some of the other models we've seen of sort of you know, what what are also called major judges. you know, what are also called community justice centers that have a lot of meeting room for other programming. There will be some room for that, I think, the focus, and in some discussions, but the focus, if you're the the footprint and the space that we can afford is going to be more on, I'd say two things. One is more public space than is currently available in the current courthouse for things like, if your court here invests away two hours, you know, do you sit in a chair in a hallway? Or is there some better space for you to sit there, you know, with your kids and family, you know, is there more private meeting space available with your attorney or other, you know, support services, and then sort of relate that. The second is for a lot of the external agencies, you know, things that, that's referrals to, and health council, and assistance to peace council, even your own private attorney or public defender, that there will be not full-time office space in the building for those external partners that are part of the justice, you know, system. So that there will be, you know, appropriate, you know, public and private meeting space, you know, those kinds of So I'm going to go on to your question, but yeah, I agree. I think this, this building does not have some of the expensive
I have a question in terms of design, I, I know, or, or to help with the design, but would it be fair to title it Justice Center and keep it at that if we do put anything in big letters or whatever? As opposed to Community Justice Center, I just, you know, think that the idea of a community justice center comparative to what others look like is a bit misleading and might negatively impact, because I mean, it's serving really good purposes, you've just stated, right? We do need it. It's just, I'm not quite sure if I would agree with the notion that it is a community justice center in the traditional sense of the word.
I mean, I'm personally fine with that, I don't know, like, it.
Right.
But is that something that should be done? Yeah, and to be honest, I haven't had a single discussion about like, maybe, or how that works, I think. Yeah, I, I think that would be fair.
I've had, I've had a question about that for some time, but I don't know, it's a whole inside. One of the things I've heard about justice centers and community justice centers is it's important how you help people enter the building depending on the need, and for instance, probation's going to be a problem, right?
Yes.
Okay, so as, as an example, how people enter a building can be just as important as what's in it. And we know there are community members who do not want to enter a government building. And it doesn't matter whether it's a hospital or a library or whatever it is, a justice center might be, and so you're on this committee, so I would say, I have no idea what the design is in terms of people getting in and out of this building and feeling safe and feeling like they're going to be treated well. I mean, that's, it's just a ball.
Yeah, I'd like to speak for this. Actually, there is going to be an entry navigator, so to say, someone who's hopefully, by the way, who can navigate through the systems of what is there, what isn't there. I kind of echo your feeling of safety and feeling included. Safety wise, no question, you're going to be in there, you're going to be safe, but with feelings.
Your emotion safety.
Yeah.
More.
I, I would say that, you know, people who historically not felt safe in their buildings would probably not change their opinion going through this building. I would definitely say that that's and honestly, that's a cultural shift that needs to take place, a part of a physical space shift. I don't think anyone would be opposed to going through proper security measures if they didn't have previous experiences of discrimination. So I think that comes more so from cultural shift and a sense of that not really the building itself, but I do like the idea how can we make this as inclusive that I committed to work with Jeff and the commissioners, as well as the entire advisory team to make sure that that is as inclusive as a space as it can be.
If I use that, the county has two or three years of funding for this sort of navigator concierge sharing disposition that it does include sort of language justice, you know, elements. Heard of that exact person will always be bilingual, you know, I don't want to promise someone who can deliver, but the, but that is a core element of that three-year funding is to have the
He says we're in, that would be the cost to redesign the building. Once they've relied on our commitment to be in and to design the building to include us. What it would cost if we backed out.
And that's okay, I have no problem with that, but I thought that's what we paid for. Six months ago, when, when we, we put in resolution. The charges for the redesign of the building with, with the PD in mind. And that was forty six hundred and something dollars.
I, I think what we got was, so my understanding of the situation was the building was designed with the design team. To not include the police department and then we paid that additional sum to have that, those drawings completed. And now that we're included, so that I, I, as my understanding of the iterations is. That's what's resulted in what is in your packet is the design with the police department and that. If the design team goes forward based upon that design and they start committing to it and. Basically committing to that. Build out. That if we back out of it to scrap the work and start over, I, I do believe that also includes that. Well, I'll let Commissioner Fiedler address the problem with the. The time, the time, it, it's the time and the money.
Yeah, I think the issue is that if we could roll into September, October, November and the, or at that point of. Walking in this, this patient, but also like submitting building permits. We might also, we might actually like order mechanical equipment. Some of that is twelve to eighteen months out of lead time. So that hundred thousand is more like, you know, going towards the cost, not, not really being architects to change the floor plan. But like mechanical, you know, design and, and actually like, you know, real equipment.
Yeah, I, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with awarding as it is here because it's word service money. But it's not specifically for redesigned building. That's a problem.
It includes all the costs that the county would incur to redo it and potentially. You know, essentially, maybe if we backed out really late and miss a construction window.
So basically, if I had it understood, this is a, here is the money. In case time comes, we, how do we pay this? Actually, we can't. Here's this hundred thousand dollars that was committed, right?
Correct, if we, if this. Yeah, i- it's, if, if the city backs out, we lose the hundred thousand dollars. But the hundred thousand dollars goes towards the five million. So it's not like it's an extra hundred thousand. It's like you're, it's a, it's a, it's like a deposit. That we would forfeit if this county right now, the purposes of this resolution is for the city to say. We're in and if they rely on that to their detriment, what they're saying is. It could cost us up to a hundred thousand dollars to undo what we've done based upon your commitment.
Okay, just made a motion with changes to paragraph two or section two. Casted just by the city of Minnesota.
Doesn't it always, doesn't it already say what we want it to say?
Yeah, combination of an upfront contribution and installation payments or just installation payments.
What, what it doesn't say, no, it's prescribing exactly how we do it. But, but if we want to do something different, if you want to pay part of it upfront. If, if you're satisfied with the wording, I don't know that it's that important. It just bothered me that, that it was too specific about how we were going to pay that. And I'd rather have that be our decision rather than clearly the resolution more specifically.
I think you could re, re, read the proposed motion and at the end just add. That with the revision that the city could pay. All or part of its obligation in a lump sum. With that. Yeah, and I think that's foregone because it would just say that's the interest. Right.
Dana, did you hear that?
Just a little bit garbled.
By council member, so that resolution number. Thirty-one series of twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the finance contribution to the community justice center. And authorizing negotiations for an intra-governmental agreement with Lake County. With the addition on section two that. They with the city revision, or the city revision can pay all or some of the. Costs with a lump sum without a penalty for really.
Phil seconds.
Are we including council member Grant?
Yes, we are.
Council member Hill?
Yes.
Council member Luna Leon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Green?
Yes.
Council member for Gentry?
Yes.
Council member Grant?
Yes.
And mayor lobby?
Yes. And thanks for the challenge. You guys are taking, taking a little bit of this too, so check some of them. We're happy to be part of, we're pretty small.
We're all gonna go get a paper route. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sure. We proved that.
Next up, we have resolution three to resolution approving a service agreement contract with Jim Schneider for professional services. Like the preface is said by, by saying, I think I already said to city council, since he's come back, it's, it's like a. The, the attitude of the street department has been a hundred days. He's been working his heart out and he's out this weekend. You got some of the best is that, that. That microverse on Saturday really hurt the city. It just did all of them. There were houses flooded, well, at Seventh Street, on Chestnut, and we've already heard that there were houses flooded on, on Toledo. At Second Street. It was bad news, but the street department was out trying to tell us during the time and. Right now, pretty critical, Jim stepped in while we searched for the street department supervisor, but he's doing.
Great, and we just need to pass this resolution so we can go ahead and pay him. He's been, as mayor said. Instrumental in getting things back on track and, and we're happy to have him. We're grateful. And we're gonna keep him as long as we can.
He's, he's, he's working two days a week, all day, Tuesday and Thursday. He's coming in the morning, it's on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and of course, when he's needed, he's coming on the weekend, so. Just to kind of know what his, his schedule is. Any questions about this, the amount of pay?
Glad to see it's commensurate with other contractors from the city. So that was a good stroke business, in my opinion. My, and it's still a fleeting question. But I believe I saw the street department supervisor. In the paper being advertised with a maximum salary of sixty thousand dollars. Is that a typo? Because it's not commensurate with other. Other departments and they're responsible for a lot of heavy equipment. And I didn't think, I thought that was the old salary.
When Jim left the city, he was making sixty-eight thousand. That's after, you know, twelve months. So I, I, I don't have a great answer for you. I think that for someone to start in the street department and earn their way up as, as other department managers have, have had to do. I, I thought it was important.
For the street department supervisors, I mean, I'm just thinking that we're, we're shooting a little low there compared to every other place. If you're looking at the county, Rowan Bridge Department, I mean, it's a, it's not even commensurate with any of ours. Department heads' salary, period.
Yeah, I, I, just so you know, when we pulled the. Or we basically pulled the past postings for the position was previously posted and so. I looked at that salary and I wanted to make sure it was adequate. It is comparable. So Colorado Municipal League has twenty twenty-one salary data from any municipality that reports to. To, to provide that data. And so I looked at that data. It is, it's, it is on the lower end, but it is comparable to cities that are. About our size and maybe some that have our specific streets needs. I think what we can do is if we find that we're not getting interest at that salary level, we, we can choose to change that salary level.
I, I mean, you know, to for Gentry's point, I think that we want a good quality candidates.
Yep.
And I, I'm sorry, but I don't, I have to agree. I don't think sixty thousand is gonna cut a good. Quality candidate. We want someone who's gonna be here for the long run, right? And keep them to grow into the position. And I think that sixty maximum starting, I mean. We're talking pretty low maximum starting here. We're not even talking minimum starting. Is pretty low. I have to fully agree. I mean, our street needs are quite major right now. I mean. We just heard about a bunch of people being overflowed. That's not gonna change anytime soon. This is our new goal. We have to get someone who's going to be qualified to look at these things ahead of time. And understand, okay, these are what are gonna change, you know?
Well, so, kind of cutting to the chase here. So what, what would be the council's recommendation? So two, two things.
More than a Summit County, more than an equal bus driver, more than a Summit State driver. That's how much they're making right now. That's what you're saying. Twenty-eight thousand hours, their minimum salary. Cost for drivers.
So I would like to, we, this is good timing because we would like to post the position a little more broadly to gather some more interest. So I guess what is the council's recommendation for the salary range? Should we repost the position?
What was the former, uh, street department supervisor's salary besides Jim Schneider? The, the, the last one, I can't remember.
No, no, I think he's asking about Mr. Labato.
I thought it was over sixty-eight.
No.
Wow, no wonder, like, that, that's like a, he was making as much as a Summit State bus driver as a street.
So what would be the council's recommendation for a salary range?
Commensurate with the other directors, chief, finance, right? I mean, shouldn't there be a pay band in there somewhere?
So that's, well, so that's the salary assessment that we're waiting on getting to, to make sure we're comparable and someone to do that analysis for us. So we posted the position based upon a salary that was posted previously. If we think that needs to be changed, that's fine. I, if we wanna change it and I can compare it to other department heads and make it comparable to that. I think the timing is good because we're gonna post the position more broadly and then that may garner more interest. So we can do that.
We're gonna, you know, position, submit that position, go some kind of eagle cap. And try and see for people who may be living here or working over there. And the candidates, that might work.
And I know we're talking about this, we're kind of getting off base here, but is there a DOE? Experience?
Yes, oh, absolutely.
But the cap was sixty thousand in the, in the paper is what I'm saying is I don't think anybody. Who makes that much money right now in Summit County as an operator is gonna apply to the same amount of money. And have ten times more responsibility, right? I mean, that's, that's, I'm like, we need good people in here to lead our department.
We used to, we used to think that was between six and eight thousand dollars. That was the cost per year. Of what it costs somebody to live here and work over there, the additional cost of now with gas prices. I mean, no one gets, but it's more than sixty-eight thousand dollars. So that has to be factored in as well for people who live here, who might want to work here. Then that has to be an incentive for them as well.
I mean, it sounds like we're selling down short and taking advantage of, I, us, gas, to be kind of honest, which I just don't agree with. A natural way of other industries, just something like that, housing brands. I think sixty-eight thousand comparable to the previous position sense, or if not comparable to other positions of less. Concrete number makes even more sense in actual comparison to the other street department heads or the other department.
I have no objection to raising the pay ban that.
Yeah.
And we can, depending on experience, I think that makes sense. If we get somebody with more experience, they might be towards the top. If we get someone with less experience, they might be towards the bottom. I think we have enough direction to go forward.
We've always been careful not to try and make a direct comparison between Lake County and Summit County. And those are the direct comparisons. On the other hand, to more to your point. That used to be because our cost of living was so much less and I'm not so sure that's true. So the, the point is well taken that the thought process around that, around, you know, people wanting to live here and work here. Has, has a little value. Like this guy, certainly. What would we think about, uh, we're coming back to us with recordation that city council made. Based, based on, or should we wait that more or should we go ahead and make that?
We should just do it. We should, because we, we need to fill the position. I, I think we could have enough guidance that we can figure out a, a range.
They have the sixty to sixty-eight?
I'm just thinking about, I don't know. I just want to make sure it's commensurate with other folks in the city that have the same types of responsibilities.
Well, so you, we, we are at a good place because you're gonna consider creating another position tonight with a, a, a pay range. And so maybe we, we can, once you get to that.
To this, yeah.
Or just let me know. I, I think we have enough guidance to work on it.
Great conversation. Thank you, guys.
Did you get anybody to apply on there?
We have one application. I would refer to it as some standard, but. We have heard there are a couple of people might want to apply, but we haven't seen this application. At this hour, our considerations for a contract with Jim Schneider. Near the discussion of that.
Um, so. This is for a maximum of six months, correct? Or it says an estimated six months. That's why if we hire a street department manager before that, six months is expired.
Yeah, the idea is that, uh, Mr. Schneider would stay to help train that person and, and, you know, not immediately. Step away at that point, but we'd have enough overlap so that the new person could be fully trained or adequately trained. And then, you know, I mean, like, uh, the consulting agreement that you have with Sarah Day is that, that would be on a on-call basis. If we needed him to come in and he was available. You'd have a contract in place if you needed it.
Any other questions? Any thoughts?
No.
Council member for Gentry moves to approve resolution number thirty-two, series of twenty twenty-two, resolution approving a service agreement with Jim Schneider for street department management services.
We have a second. Near the discussion.
Council member Hill?
Yes.
Council member Luna Leon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Green?
Yes, welcome back, Jim.
Council member for Gentry?
Yes.
Council member Grant?
Yes.
And mayor lobby?
Alright, so this, uh, resolution before you is in response to the goal setting that we had. A while back where the council identified some things that you would like to see. Before the end of twenty twenty-two and, uh, one of the things that we had discussed was the issue of employee. Recruitment and retention and that the, like many employers, the city is, is facing. Competition for its employees and we need to work on outreach to our community. And we need to work on retention for our current employees and the discussion of who would be able to do that. And the bottom line is, as you can see from the staff report, we have been lacking, uh, human resources support. In a number of ways and the duties have fallen on the city's finance director. Not because it is part of her job discretion, but because she has a willingness to, to do those tasks. But, uh, her workload is excessive. Uh, it is unreasonably excessive. Her, uh, work ethic is phenomenal. But we risk burning her out and losing her if we do not get some. Work off of her plate. And, uh, the human resources director position is, is a, is one I think the city is in need of for a number of reasons. I think there are a lot of things that we could do for our employees that we just don't have the, um, time and, and bandwidth. To do, uh, we talked about, you know, the family program. We debated that last time, the resources that, that would require on the city's end. There, um, the employee relations aspects. Updating our employee handbook. These are all things that we don't necessarily have a dedicated person to do. We also, um, our finance director pointed out that if we had a risk manager, which many cities combine with our human resources director position, which you can see we've done here. If they have a risk manager, you get a decrease, you get a, uh, and your general liability insurance and your workers' compensation insurance. So we could take advantage of that. We, we don't have an exact number on that, but it could be as much as by a five percent discount on our liability insurance if we have a risk manager. What it means a lot of times is that you emphasize, uh, safe work practices for your employees. City was at previously, you know, we, we were in the winter instructed on, uh, you know, uh, uh, safe. Navigation of ice. Surprisingly, I will tell you, a number of people, um, injure themselves in the workplace on ice. Safe work practices for, for everybody is something that it, we have not been able to do. A finance director is really wants to do it, but just hasn't had the bandwidth. So this is creating that, um, position. You can see that the salary range for this position is fifty thousand, seventy thousand. So taking guidance from the council, that's. You know, um, we can make other positions comparable to that. This salary, um, I did do the research for comparable communities. It's in the ballpark. Some communities, um, start out a little, like, a little lower and end up a little lower. Some start out a little higher, end up a little lower, but it's within the ballpark. I just also wanted to point out. It's within the planned salary range for the county's human resources director. So that's, that's important for us. I mean, not that we have to go lockstep with them, but I, I do feel like if there are comparable positions in our, uh, our. Area that we should be paying comparably. So, uh. With that, I think it's beyond time that we have this, uh, position at the city. When I came in, I was surprised the city did not have a human resources director. I think it would be an amazing addition to the city and I think it would really help us. Like I said today. We just lost another employee, so I would love to have a human resources director. I think there are other ways that we can retain employees rather than, uh, in addition to pay, I think. Their pay is a, is an essential, but I said from the beginning, I think if we compare employees a fair wage and give them a good working environment. We're going to be able to keep the majority of people. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'd like to comment. I've been worried about Donna, as you know. She, you know, she said her work ethic is, is. You can't talk, didn't you take that out? You can't talk, her not coming in weekly. Her workload is, is that's a tension. I admire that, but I also know there are times when she is so stressed out. And she, it's, it's a little scary. This, a lot of what she does is human resources work and, and by that, it's not just, you know, onboarding new employees or doing employee vehicles. A lot of workers' complaints or, or insurance, like a lot of things that are, and also risk management. We talked about that, so it doesn't inspection each year. And they give us a list of things they'd like to see improved. Sometimes we can improve some of those things. Sometimes we just don't have the bandwidth to do it. If we had a person as our risk manager focusing on that. And the other is eighty-eight requirements.
Yeah.
We don't have a person focusing on that, uh, and this person would take that, that responsibility on. So. I, I have, I have long thought of a different solution to take the pressure off of Donna. I thought we should. Have another smart type person who just acts as her, her administrative assistant, uh, but I like the way his solution is much better.
Yeah, I think if, if you're taking full time, yes, it, it varies because. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I think we did those calculations when we did the employee retention incentive. And I can give you that exact number of full and part-time employees.
Also a huge resource administrative role of part-time, which includes reservists and resident reserves and fire department. And so that, that takes on a whole different school of work and dealing with FPDA. Any thoughts on this positively or negatively?
Uh, we need it.
Dana, any thoughts?
Uh, not really. I mean, we've, we've talked for a long time about how this position has been needed and. You know, I just think we're at that point. We can take that step and we should.
I, I just have a couple of questions about the additional duties, uh, city communications. I, I know that's important, especially with website design and also like press releases. So we can, I mean, I'm in support of this, this position, but can we flesh that out a little bit more? For those additional duties, uh, just because unless you're coming up with another, uh, like director of communications. Type of role for the city, if they are truly gonna take on city communications, I think that means, what does that mean?
Well, so this is what the mayor and I talked about a little bit is, is, I wanted to, to some extent, see how things shake out with these. With the addition of a planning director and human resources director. And with the addition of our deputy city clerk to see how we're able to cover the things that the city needs. And so while we've talked about creating a, a communications director position. We need that, but I don't know where it falls at this moment. So I added it to this position description in the hopes that, so. Mina has been updating our website and getting things more up to date on our website. Could, could, does she have the bandwidth to oversee a website redesign? I, I don't know. Would a human resources person have that capability or bandwidth? I put it in there on the off chance that this isn't, that's an ad hoc duty that they could do. I still think at some point we're gonna need, uh. Whether it's a current staff or additional staff to be a communications person. So for example, um, fireworks, right? What, what fireworks are legal? We needed, you know, we needed to push that information out. Pushed it out to department heads. Um, Adam Descham asked me to push it out to him at the tourism panel. It would be great if we could have had. You know, a PR person to push out what the, because there's questions about that. What, what can, what's legal and what's not? What can people do? What can people buy? That's the type of communication stuff ideally we would have someone do. So I added those duties and you saw I added grant writing and grant supervision oversight. Because I'm hoping that this person could pick up some of those duties. If it's too much, then we may come back and say, look, our current staff can't cover these. But I didn't want this, uh, a. a person coming in to be like, well, you never told me I was going to have to grant write or do communications. I think it is an additional duty. Wouldn't be primary duties, but we really have to see how things, once, once we get fully staffed with this and the planning director, I really do want to see how things shake out and where we can fit some of these other things that we have all collectively identified is a need for us. And the mayor and I met with a representative from Senator Bennett's office, Matthew, and he was explaining about, you know, money that's available for communities. And I said, the problem for us in small communities is, is it's a cycle. Communities that have money have personnel to chase the money. They have dedicated people who can apply for the grants and manage the grants, and we're in a position where we don't have the people. So we can't apply. So I added it to this sort of a wish list. And then we'll just kind of have to see how it shakes out. If they don't have the bandwidth, then we'll have to come back and, and talk to, you know, in our goal setting, like do, do, what do we want to do? Do we want to make this a dedicated position? But for right now, I wanted to add it so maybe they could do it.
One suggestion I may make when it comes to additional duties, maybe put in parentheses, less than 20%, and then say may include, but not limit to. So it's not something that they're, oh, I'm responsible for grant writing and grant management. I'm responsible for cities. Like, you're going to have additional duties assigned up to 20%, which seems to be a reasonable amount, right? And it may include but it's not limited to. So if they bring a super, superpower that we don't know that we need right now, and it's not part of the additional duties, we're covered.
Yep, agreed.
I would say to your point, it's my hope and actually my assumption that adding a planner and HR person with Mina as our, as our city clerk, that those three people should be able to handle all the things that we, that, you know.
Yes, for now, yes, agreed, agreed. And that's why we're going to want to see how things shake out, because I think, you know, everybody brings, Mida's brought great skills, technology skills, and it's really going to go better. And you know, if we're lucky enough to find another Mida to be a human resources director, then I think, you know, but yes, we, we, we have a lot of needs, and I think this will cover a lot of our immediate needs. But I think Councilmember Fugency is right that the city will probably have other needs that we will address in the goal setting for 2023. And hopefully we have a, you know, healthy budget where we can consider some of the needs, I think. You know, as Councilmember Luna Leon mentioned, we, we still have some big, big issues to tackle in our community and yeah.
Thank you, Matt. Tim, any thoughts?
Nothing really to add. I do believe we need the position, so I would be in favor of it.
Sure. Okay. We've kind of been in this spot. Time to go into the fire. You. Thank you all. At this time, I would introduce the motion.
Who moves to approve resolution number 33 series of 2022, a resolution creating a position of human resources director and risk manager?
I'm doing the last seconds. She's ready for discussion. We'll call this.
Councilmember Loretson is not here. Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Leon?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugency?
Yes.
Councilmember Grant?
Yes.
And Mayor Lobby?
Yes.
I'd like to thank Lori for this. She's bringing to the table some great ideas about how our city needs to function. And sometimes in the day-to-day you know, rush of getting things done, those divisions are not always apparent to me, I will say. So she's really brought a lot to the table.
Right, thank you. And I will tell you that our finance director and our administrative assistant, thank you. Thank you. And I, I personally thank you because I see the hours that they put in, and I appreciate the fact that they're willing to do it, but I don't think it's fair to ask that forever. And so this is a, this is a, I think, an excellent, excellent way to address that. And I think it will, it will benefit the employees and city a lot.
Thank you. At this time, the public meetings player. First, I'd say the council has moved its meeting from Monday to Tuesday. So we will show Monday, the, on the first of Tuesday.
I would like to point out that the case, anybody's interested, the tourism panel meeting on July 19th has been canceled.
I just wanted to go, thank you. I would like to remind us, used to the park, the city has, has graciously funded. The first one will be this Thursday. And should be, should be a really nice event. I know the Main Street people have been working really hard to get that, that park ready for, for that useful event. And also the Tate Rocker House is having their events both Friday and Saturday evenings. It's, I'm not quite sure what it is, dose of the tape. But should be, should be in Chinatown, there is to go. And one more thing, tomorrow, a group is going down to Eagle County. They have something called the Mirror Bus. Now, this, kind of this is what I was talking about. They, they decided in Eagle County that they were really having a problem with healthcare and the community. And the reason they were is, just we talked about, is a lot of people won't go in a government building. They just want, that's sort of prerogative, but that, because those are hospital critics. They're not getting the healthcare. So they put a bus in play that goes to these communities and provides health. So that's going to be a tour tomorrow. It's something we invited the Sacred Heart Hospital and County Health to participate in this. Anyway, it's, it's really a really creative idea. Not, not like the, you know, the, the food bathroom bus for the school, for the school education bus. So this is the one we'll say. Maybe on a more serious level. And they do dental and vision and general health, healthcare. So that should be very interesting. I hope that's something we can bring along. Anything else for the community planner? Okay, next up, Mayor's report. I mean, already talked about the things I wanted to talk about. And Housekeeping, how about council?
How are we going to integrate Allison back with? She had some comments. Who's going to, is that going to be after our council reports?
Yes, it's on the agenda at the end.
Well, actually, isn't, but we will do.
Is it this time?
No, we took it out.
Oh, well, we can do it at the end. There's no.
Okay, just making sure.
I mean, on the news, I mentioned this earlier, but you know, every, just about every petition difference assistant has an attached addiction pay now or we will submit to court. It's going to, it's and how many people you have that can be handled by URA. How many people do you have that cannot be handled by you? Right now, the troubles with URA is because it is a state program. We all know how fast the state works. A lot of these people may not get home in time, though, you know, credit where credit's due. A lot of our partners that we work with are and are willing to work with us and URA, the state program on this. However, that, that's not always true for a lot of things. The unfortunate news is that that service is in September, the end of September. This, so COVID, it was a COVID program. It was to assist people from COVID. That program is in September. To this day, we helped well over 250 people of our residents get connected and continuously get connected. They had an 18-month period. You could reapply for 18, up to 18 months. And a lot of people did take advantage of that to be able to keep up with the increases in everything while they were trying to make sure they were good for the future. Basically, it was really to help people get back on foot from COVID, but it's turned into a, everyone's been impacted by COVID, and now everyone's also facing risks. Increases in.
I'm sorry to get you through that. I'm also for the people who, who may not be aware, you know, we did the other needs committee almost right away in March of 2020. And, and so we were, we, we did a great job as a community, taking care of a community. And then we turned that over. The state's program got rolled. And at first it was very, very slow, but they got back. And so we kind of turned the code. We ran out of, we spent over $700,000 in the other needs committee. We turned it over to URA, and it, I, when everything was said, they've done a decent job. But now it's coming to an end. I don't know what happens next.
That is, stay true for share. Just keep in mind, as we continue moving forward, that this is our current community's needs, and they will continue to be for the foreseeable future, unfortunately. Any other council reports? Dana, do you have anything?
No. Sorry, I was late.
Thank you for hanging in tonight. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. At this time, then we will allow for public comments on any items you'd like to speak with. If you'd like to comment, please come up to the microphone, introduce yourself, and you'll have through this.
Good question. To continue, we've had a lot of talk in this meeting about how which damage can occur as a consequence of heavy rain, tsunami, microbursts. And the street department has done a really terrific job intercepting what they can, what they could. I wish I could agree with that. When you talk about risk assessment, as a part of your, I'd like to invite all of you to please, if you could, in your scare calls, stop at 101 Toledo. It's at the T of Toledo, Second Street. Stand in front of that big stone wall and look east. The street shoots straight up at a very severe angle. It's a long street. Above that is a little bit green and forest. Behind that are nine traps full of water. Now, on Saturday evening, was it Saturday or Sunday? See me in front of that stone wall with the shovel and the hole of the night and heavy rain, after having them on due diligence to assess risk, that that dirt road that's been that way for over a year and a half would, in a heavy rain, which was definitely coming, wash down and blast our property. Now, we saw this coming. We lived under these conditions for a year and a half. We have asked for the city to provide updates to residents. What are you doing? What is happening here? Who's responsible? What decision are we made? Will the authorities go underground? Do you know what I mean, theories? Who's making the decisions and who's communicating those decisions? In advance of July tsunami, which happened a year ago, and most lived here anyway at the time, knows that we do give, give rates, flights, no, big surprise. We reached out to the street department, to administrative services. We said, is there an engineering plan for flood mitigation occurring with this road project? Why? Standing in front of that stone wall 13 years ago during a similar microburst event, water's running down Third, Second Street, but on one side, it's running clear. On the other side, it's yuck, and it smells. It hits a culvert. It runs on the east side of Toledo. Hits another culvert and blasts out on another land. And within three days, it killed everything. It came in contact with, this was incredibly toxic water source of which, I don't know. So next thing you see now is not arbitrary. It is not human sleuthing. It is part of private flood mitigation design. And as part of risk assessment in conjunction with the adapt innovation initiative, expense, time, design, orchestration. Our risk assessment was to reach out to the city to identify an impending disastrous problem and ask for information to do not receive an engineering plan, which we did not receive, some kind of communication.
While past the time, please, please wrap it up.
And the result is that we stood in front of that stone wall to watch the tsunami, mud, asphalt, boulders, rock, gravel, slime. While we stinkin' through the slime, crashed down at the cumulative speed and hit that stone wall with a south side of the house, water poured under the house after a historic destruction. It used to be market steel and started eroding the foundation of my cell foundation, which all the houses. We sent out a SOS to the street department. They'll reply. We sent a message to Mayor. Show them the plot. We finally decided to call fire department. Those lads showed up, striking glass. In a heavy, heavy downpour, they helped us by carrying sandbags. They plucked the situation. It was creating a very dangerous circumstance to a structure that's cursed. And we stayed out there with us, even in time for our assessment. And left with an invitation to some, for who ray created another hazard, which is called that. So we were, we were trying, I'd like to all to know, that it's just one person who looks like he can help. I think that the city, based on statements on the website, on the mayor's file page, has even a little obligation to explain to the residents, the tenants, the visitors, all of those, should we go? Why we're being treated like a doormat as a little community in the bigger community? Lights keep going up, too many lights. Our neighborhood is looking like a, too many gula. We don't get good snow power in our town. Our roads are falling apart. And the only response we'll ask, what is your engineering plan for flood mitigation? So the attitude of the street department personnel, both of the offices in the regulation, is that they don't have to discuss this. That the woman
Kim, you, you need to stop. You, you go way too far.
I do think other people will want to use this.
I, I'm
And I know that this sounds harrowing on you because
Whether or not I'm asking you, first of all.
Communicated about snow power and other issues.
I'm sorry. But Steve, you're next up. Would you like to speak?
No.
Okay, if you don't want to speak. Tim, thank you very much for your comments.
Craig, please respond to the needs.
I try to do the dinner again.
We haven't done enough.
Thank you very much.
I wish I could speak.
No, please, uh. Okay. Are there any other public comments? Anybody up there on the on the Zoom? Okay, great.
I don't hear people answer the surface because the damage to our property is
Thank you very much. Nigel, on the same council, just a jury. What was that? A statement to the council?
I would like to make a statement to the council. If you get the conversation, Tim called me like four times outside. If the conversation I had with her was recorded, you would have a different thought about who was the root. And who was being cut. And I would say.
When you're.
But but she was very, very, so calling it that.
When you've spent hundreds of hours building the landscape and you do not hear back to the mayor, you poke them off there. And when your plants are at risk of being killed by toxic water, as is now.